To the July 29 meeting, the Kingston Board of Selectmen, please rise and join me in salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the public for which it stands, one nation, unified, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, we're starting a little bit earlier than normal because we have a long agenda today. But let me begin by introducing the folks around the table. I'll start with my far right and Chief, Police Chief Joel Johnson, Susan Era, the Select Board Administrative Assistant, Peter Begy, Board Member, Chuck Hart, Board Member. I'm Ellie Alessio, your Chair. To my left is Glenn Koppelman, our Vice Chair, Laurie Schwett, Board Member, Fire Chief Graham Pellerin, Finance and Human Resource Director Paula Mahoney, and last but certainly not least, our favorite Town Clerk, Tax Collector, Tammy Begy. We're gonna... Phil's, I'm sure, yeah, Phil may be in...
Saw him driving away.
Not a problem. We'll start, since I started with Joel, why don't we start with Joel? With some re... oh.
We have Boards and Committees up first and Conservation is here.
You want to do Boards and Committees first?
Yeah, they're always on the agenda first. If anybody wants to speak, they don't want to.
Oh, sure, okay. I'm going to start with Mrs. Evy Nathan from the Conservation Commission. How's that sound? She was the first one here, how's that? The early bird. Margie Bean. Okay, sit down and introduce yourselves.
Okay, I'm Evy Nathan.
No, no, Evy, put the microphone on the table. Perfect. Because if you handle them, it causes all kinds of static and feedback and...
Okay. Okay, I'm Evy Nathan from Conservation. We're just here for like a quarterly checkup and to let you know what we're all doing. I will start and then Margie, my co-chair, is here just to be here. And she's also Chair of Pollinator Pathways. Greg Senko, who's my Trails Chair, probably has the most interesting information for you. So I will give it a go to start. I attended a climate summit, Climate Adaptation Workshop in Portsmouth last week. I represented Kingston as part of the Great Bay Watershed. It was an interesting all-day seminar, but I didn't have a lot of take-home for our area for what we can do for flood resilience and everything. It was basically coastal. But of course, all our waters run into the watersheds, so it was interesting. We're working on Graham with fire safety, but Greg will address that. We have a new passport. We've had for some years a Trail Passport for Youth where the kids take these out into the trails. They do portions of the trails and they find a rubbing post and they take a crayon or pencil and the rubbing post is embossed. So they rub each trail that they've been to. There are five. And when they've been to all five trails, they get a free Trailblazer ice cream at one of our local ice cream places. We found a couple problems with this. We're almost out of them. These are our last ones. One, it didn't say anything about youth on the front. So we've really changed the design in it now. It says, "Hey, kids, explore Kingston's trails with our Trail Passport for Youth, just for you." And it has pictures of the kids all in here. So it's clearly for children. Everybody saw this and grabbed it. So we had a bunch of adults grabbing them. Not necessary.
And it looked perfect to them. This is for me, it's only five trails.
Anyway, so we're going to, we're working with the library on a big 4H project that's going to kick off this fall. It's called Get in Touch with Your Wild Side. And we're going to promote this. We're going to take the kids on five trail hikes and promote our trails as part of... And these are all town forest trails, not the selt... Well, actually, there is a rubbing post in the selt, but they're mostly town trail forests. Town forest trails. Then we have the same thing for adults, but much less, much, not as pretty. But it has QR codes and so forth. And we're slightly altering this to reflect some new trails. And we also, almost out of these. So I'm going to pass these around and you can each take one if you haven't ever seen one. Select Board Members, I don't think I brought enough for everybody. You have them anyway. Okay, let's see. So a problem with that is that we have used up our public education line. We're actually in the red by $24. I don't see where we can take the money. I have a quote for printing the Trail Passport for Youth of $106.50. It's about the same. I didn't get the old quote. It's been a couple of years since we printed the adult Trail Passport. Do you remember how much it was? But it was around the same amount. And so I need about $225 or $250 that I just don't have in my budget because I foresee using all the other lines. So I don't know if there's a way that we can find that money. So that's a question I put to you. We have four new members. I don't know if you've met them yet. I haven't been at past meetings. Have they come to introduce themselves yet? Wynden? Okay. Oh, Terry from Begy Farm?
Yes, Terry O'Brien.
All right.
Came into us at our last meeting and introduced himself.
Okay.
Told us a little bit about his background and said that he was a new Conservation Commission member. So we welcomed him.
Yep, he's the most enthusiastic of the four. So I will urge the other three to get in to meet you. Then Pollinator Pathways. We were in Manchester at the Public Library at an Audubon event opening. We had the table. We held an informational event at Bagley Tour Perennials in Warner last week. We held a Pollinator Garden Tour. An educator named Paula Corrigan Exeter this weekend, which was well-attended. We will be presenting a two-hour program at Castle in the Clouds on August 18. And most exciting, we were asked to present to Southeast Land Trust landowners. And here's a card saying, "Join Selt, Matt Tar from UNH Cooperative Extension, Evy Nathan and Margie Bean from Pollinator Pathways, New Hampshire, for a night of learning about the importance of pollinator conservation." I worked very hard on adapting our PowerPoint presentation to large landowners. So far, we've just been talking to people with small yards. So it's exciting. This went to a lot of people. So Margie hasn't even seen it yet. So it's exciting and that's happening in the middle of August, so...
So Evy, can we go back to the request for increased budget? So what is your budget line?
My budget line for... yes. My public education budget line was 500 and we have already spent 523. Most of that was Pollinator Pathways information.
Let's dig it up later.
Okay. So I need about $200 more. I guess that's a request to you. Or I could use some money. You know, we have a $600 professional services line. I could possibly move some money out of...
Well, that was going to be my question. Maybe we shouldn't get into the details now, but I was wondering if there are other lines in the budget that you could move some money around if you didn't expect to expend all of those because...
I expect to spend all of it. We run real close to the bone. You'll see that from past years. If we, I wouldn't spend the professional services allowance unless we do some sort of management plan for Fry Road and we can address that. And in that case, we need money for Ron Klemarsik, our forester that we work with. I'm not sure. I could use some of that money and then if I need money for a management plan, come back to you. That might be the easiest.
That might be the easiest thing to do. Why don't you think about that? And so that we don't get ourselves too deep into the weeds right now. Think about it and then maybe let us know what you plan to do.
These trail things are really important. I mean, they fly out of the rack downstairs and, you know, people want them.
That's a good thing.
They're important, so... All right, I'll turn it over to Greg.
Good morning, I'm Greg Senko. Can you hear me okay? All right, I chair the Trails Committee and I've got a report here for you on what's been going on. In general, I feel the trails and parking areas are staying clean and being used appropriately at the town forests. We continue to monitor the properties with easement holders and we have game cameras set up at some of the areas that we want to monitor more carefully. We take care of things like fallen limbs and trail cleanups on a regular basis. And usually, we're able to clean up any fallen trees and limbs within a couple of days of them being reported.
You have a small army of volunteers now.
Yeah, our committee has actually grown. We've lost a few members, but we've gained more than we lost, which is great. So in our last trail construction project, we had about eight volunteers and myself out there working to build some bridges, which is fantastic. Makes the work go faster. The trailhead parking areas that we've worked on over the last couple of years and the kiosks that were put up last year and maps, I think they have greatly improved the public access and usability of the conservation properties. And it also gives them kind of a uniform look across the town where, you know, in some places you used to have to park along the side of the road. There was no marking indicating the trailhead. It's a much improved look to the town forests for public access. So this spring was a pretty wet spring. We had, you know, a lot of rainfall. Some of the trail sections were difficult to pass for extended periods of time. We've created a list of the problem areas and we're picking away at those problems where we can. We're rerouting trails to higher ground or building a bridge to cross a wet area. But there's a couple of places in the Acorn Town Forest that are just beyond our volunteer group's capabilities. And we're working with the DPW to try and find a solution to improving those trail areas. There's very rocky conditions there. It's not something that we can go in with hand tools and really make an improvement there. So we're working together with Phil to try and come up with a solution for one of those areas. And we're really thankful for the help. In May, we met with the Fire Department to talk about emergency access and fire access to the conservation properties. The key action items that were identified were, first of all, wherever possible, we should have gates for access to vehicles, be it a truck or an ATV. There are some places that either in the past or today still have boulders in place which you just can't pass and that hinders emergency access and fire access to the town forests. So Valley Lane Trailhead is one of those places. A gate is needed there. We've purchased the gate. We have it in our possession and sometime this fall, we'll install that, which will improve access there. Another point that was raised for quick access, it would have been handy to have all the gates keyed the same so that we don't have lock boxes with different keys in them, making it confusing. Now, we've changed the locks on the gates. They're all keyed the same as the Tucker French Family Forest. So that's already been done. We've changed the locks. They're all keyed the same now. We also talked about sharing map data with the Fire Department. We've sent some of our trailhead maps. We need to do more on the actual trail locations so that identifying where a rescue might be needed, it could be clear as to what trail leads there and the best method of access. We need to do more on working on those maps to identify where truck access is possible, where ATV access is possible. Right now, I think the town forests are still a little bit of a blank slate for the Fire Department. The Tucker French is clearly mapped out and it's quite clear there what type of access is available throughout that property. So that's something that we need to work on. Also in that vein, a lot of the town forest trails were intended as walking trails or even some places where they may be old skidder paths or old roadways. The work that we've done with bridges to make them more passable has been with the mindset of bike and foot access. But for emergency access, it would be handy if at least you could get an ATV further into these properties. Some of the trails extend more than a mile, which would be a long carryout with a stretcher, for example. So in the future, we're going to keep that in mind, build bridges wide enough that an ATV can pass. And in June, we, I'm sorry, in July, we built two new bridges in the Acorn Town Forest and those were built to that standard. So they're built four feet wide and ATV could pass across them. And so that's, I think that's all the updates after that meeting. In June, the Trails Committee worked on the new white trail in the Valley Lane Town Forest. We had the idea to extend a trail into the property that was purchased from Elektra Alessio, extending the town forest. And we now have created a trail that kind of loops through that territory, that parcel. But to make a clear and logical loop around, we needed to cross an abutters property, Cheryl Kine. She's keen on putting her property into conservation. We made an agreement with her, signed a form which says that we can have a trail there for five years. So with crossing some corners of her property, we made a nice loop at the end of that new white trail, which passes Beaver Dam and a large wetlands area that's been created by the Beaver Dam. And a copy of that agreement was supplied to Chuck. Let's see. And then I guess one other worthy note is that access to the Fry Town Forest has always been kind of difficult. The trailhead lies along a Classics Road. It's a ways off the paved roadway.
You have to go into Danville.
Yeah, you have to go to Danville, but there is no parking really. You just park on the side of the road. And when we considered forest management plans there, that limited access also reduced the feasibility of having a timber harvest in that town forest. But in the last year, one of the abutters, Melissa Perry, has cleared some land on her property and done a timber harvest there. And that Classics roadway on the Danville side was widened and improved for equipment access. And now she's improving it so that vehicle access is possible with the end goal of passenger cars should be able to pass along that roadway. And she's setting aside a corner of her property for parking, which could be used for the town forest access. So instead of having to park along the side of the road, vehicles can get in much closer to the trailhead and it makes the feasibility of a timber harvest much more possible in the Fry Town Forest. So we're evaluating that possibility with Ron Klemarsik, the forester.
It's also one of our prettiest forests.
Yeah, with the views to Colby Brook, it's really a pretty trail.
You want to get people out there, you just tell them, "Oh, come watch the beavers." Zoom, there they are.
But that's what we've been working on. Do you have any questions? I think that lies outside of Trails and Conservation Commission's work. It's really more the Lake Association.
Well, I'd first like to begin by thanking you all and your committee members for all the hard work that you do on our behalf. I mean, the trails are the talk of the Rockingham County. We have probably one of the best systems going and that's to all your hard efforts and your committees. And for that, we thank you very much on behalf of the town. It's tremendous what we have to offer our community. I don't have any questions. We know we need to... do you have any other comments from the Board Members? We need to find you some money, I gather, so...
I just this morning also got as a PS postcard from our Conservation Easement Holders, Southeast Land Trust, who says that the staff recently viewed remote imagery on Fry Town Forest, Door Town Forest, and Route 107 Town Forest and they did not observe any concerning changes to the land. So everything looks good from our Conservation Easement Holders as well. Okay, thanks for having us. If you, nobody has any questions?
Mr. Corrigan.
So since Acorn is a town forest, we shouldn't need any special action in the Select Board to do work out there because it is town property?
Yep.
The old Beatty Road, are we still looking at doing improvements on that? Lost North Road?
That would be with Selt. I don't know about that.
Okay.
I imagine so.
Phil, I believe that road that you're talking about is still Kingston's Classics Road. It's surrounded by Selt. We do a lot of work out there and we built that fire bridge on the North roadside. That's actually town property. So Selt owns the property around it, but that main true way is actually, it's still a town Classics Road. So I don't think, you talk to them and I'm sure they'd want to have you do some improvement out there. But I believe that's still Kingston's property.
Ernie had mentioned doing some improvements just where you go into that dip there.
Yep.
It's hard to get, the ambulants can't get in and out.
Correct.
When that time comes, we will need an emergency declaration from the Select Board just to approve first responder access because anywhere in a class six road requires that declaration from the Select Board before we do a public policy. I believe we'll be able to talk to you eventually on that.
So I was actually going to bring that up today. So I talked with Ernie about that. I don't know if you need me to put something in writing that says that we use that as an emergency access for the trailhead or if that's just, Phil would probably know better, if that's just a declaration that they take a vote on?
Anytime it's for like safety to prevent access, if we have done this on back road when there had been damage done on there, the Select Board just... If you're in favor of it, obviously, you can just make the declaration and then Classics Board is authorized to maintain emergency access. And that dip would jump the law, but... It's allowing the DPW to work in that area. Yeah, I don't think we need to address it further. Just when Ernie will be bringing that view, I just wanted to make it clear.
We'll take that up when Ernie gets here.
May I add just one comment?
Sure.
It's sort of sidebar. I've lived on Tucker Road for many years and have seen like, I think it was two, maybe three fires out back. And none of the trucks were able to get any further than Ferrari's house and everybody walked in. So this whole thing about access is a wonderful thing.
Thank you, Mrs. Bean. Any other comments for our colleagues? Glenn?
No, just thinking about the expenditure that you're looking for. I don't know, Ellie, if you want to deal with it now. I mean, I said that, you know, we didn't want to get too into the weeds, but it's up to you.
Are you going to look into, well, I guess, go ahead.
Since I'm the rep, we'll work with them and we'll find the money and we'll let the Board know.
And come back with a recommendation? Okay.
Sounds good.
Take a look at your other budget items. If you can move it from somewhere else, fine. If not, through Chuck, we'll come up with something else. Okay?
Do I need to tell you or do I just need to talk with Paula?
You need to talk with...
You and I will talk and we'll figure out what it is and we'll get it to Paula.
If everybody told us only that, it's only, we'd be in deep trouble. Thank you all for coming in this morning. Oh, my goodness, that's great, thank you.
Actually, I didn't look your way.
Okay. The only other committee person I see here is Mrs. Dion.
Hello. I just want to give an update on, we had a Budget Committee meeting on Wednesday evening. And we have a couple of liaisons that will be reaching out to department heads for a little clarification on some of the budget items to date this year on the expenditures. We have one question about revenue that is coming from Fire, one of the ambulance items. We just want some clarification on how that's kind of calculated. And then we have established our schedule for the fall going into from... And we are starting a little early. So we would like to have the budget to the Budget Committee by September 18th so we can start reviewing everyone's budgets in preparation for budget hearings and deliverative in January and February. Last year, we had a lot of meetings back-to-back. So we had like six meetings in approximately two and a half weeks and we want to avoid that this year so that we have the time to get updated budgets and review them. So we have the proposed schedule. I just need to clarify a couple of the last dates of the budget hearing and the warrant articles.
I think the question, what, did you find the answer to the question of whether the warrant article hearing is considered part of the budget hearings?
So the budget hearing is when we review the entire budget and the warrant articles is all the warrant articles. That includes the one warrant article that is for budget, so...
I took the two of those to both be budget hearings and I'm not sure if anybody else has a different... She's trying to move the date a little farther.
Correct.
But that warrant would not be entirely...
Because of the way that the holidays line up this year, our first, we would like to do a full review in January of the budget before we go into budget hearings so that any questions from any of the budget committees are answered before we get to budget and warrant articles so we don't have the same issue that we had last year and that people don't vote for the budget that they've spent a lot of time working on. So we're trying to have a budget meeting on January 8th, which means then we would have to post the budget seven days ahead of time before the Budget Committee hearing. And so the current schedule says our budget hearing is January 11th and then the warrant articles the following, January 18th. So when you look at the political calendar, we have to have both by January... We have to have the budget hearing by January 21st.
And we want them as early as possible so we have plenty of time to get the...
Correct. But I also want, yep. So I think that my current proposed dates, and I copied you on these, are January 8th for a budget meeting, January 11th for the public budget hearing, the joint meeting with the Select Board, and January 18th for the warrant article. So it's just pushing those last two meetings out one week. Wait, no, I'm sorry, 18th and the 25th, sorry. Yep.
Say, should we check with the moderator on all these dates?
I can check with the moderator.
I would, because I know that the year before she did correct them. And the year before that, we went later and there was a lot of, there was short time to do some things.
That's why I, yeah.
I think that, you know, we are due...
Right. It's just, it gets both Christmas and New Year's on Wednesdays, so it kind of pushes us onto January 8th, so... And so it, once I have that, I'll send out the schedule to all the department heads along with your liaisons. And so it, once I have that, I'll send out the schedule to all the department heads along with your liaisons. And we'll be meeting pretty much every other week from September through January.
I think just that, I think a part of that process is that the meetings will be much shorter than three or four hours. And it is scheduled, for instance, to have highway and municipal buildings in on a night. And that's the only thing that's coming in on that night, which gives them more time to present that or do battle or whatever was gonna happen. It's the same with the police and the fire. And Tammy's... No. But it just gives us, the Budget Committee, shorter hours, shorter meeting hours, and more time for the department heads to explain their budget and if those issues work it out. And then the other meetings might be Conservation and Historic District, and there might be two or three on those nights because they're a little easier to handle.
So just so you're aware, we're doing the smaller committees first, and then the larger your budget, the later that we're gonna see you in the budget sessions. It also allows not for the Budget Committee to just be like too much data so that we have, we can actually review the data and analyze it and then be able to do updates as we go.
I have a question, not about the schedule. So you had a meeting the other night, and it wasn't aired? So I don't know if it was a coordination problem, so I guess my question is, if you're holding a meeting here, who's responsible for ensuring that it's recorded?
Yeah.
I would imagine that the chair would coordinate with Mrs. Air in the Select Board's office.
Yeah. So I, I'm gonna make sure that everyone gets the calendar moving forward and that Adam gets that calendar. He is not available on Wednesday evening, so he needs to do it remotely, so I think... And he has also offered the secretary and the recording secretary training so that we can make sure we do it.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
So we'll... Yeah.
I don't, I mean, I don't know how to record anything, but I should make it easy to coordinate with Adam and recording secretary as backup for any committee, whether it be the budget or whatever.
Yeah.
Yep, yep. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mrs. Dion or the Budget Committee? Okay.
Would you like an update on Wage Matrix?
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
Okay, so we are currently still meeting with Wage Matrix. We are, we have a lot of data, and we are, we have a lot of data from towns, but we have titles from those towns, and doing a comparison from a title to a title is not going to give anyone the proper review that we should have because what we've realized is that our titles versus other towns' titles, their jobs are not anything similar. We have, our titles have a lot more responsibilities. So we have been asking for job descriptions from everyone, updated job descriptions to make sure we have that information, going through those job descriptions to make sure that it makes sense that the title we're using for the data is the proper title and not, not trying to compare two titles and analyze them because we're gonna run into issues where our certain employees have additional roles and responsibilities that are above and beyond a title. We knew we were gonna have some of this issue kind of with the title we use in town called Administrative Assistant. We kind of use that across multiple areas, and the roles and responsibilities differ within the town. And also, if you go out and look at that job title, that's not what we're doing. That's not what the employee is doing. So we have, the remaining job titles are for the department heads, which I believe that you're reviewing today. I think that once we have all of that information, we'll be meeting on Wednesday to review that. We have 21 different towns of data. There are some departments, we can't compare those towns. We just received some data from Phil on Friday that will hopefully help us with other towns for the Department of Public Works because the comparison really comes down to what the people are doing and not necessarily the titles. So we've gotten all that information, and we are hoping that potentially in August, or maybe at the first budget meeting, we can present all the data to a joint Budget Committee Select Board with what we have.
Okay. Questions? Comments?
Thank you for providing that. I think my, the biggest question that I have is why these discussions are held in non-public? And why they're not available for everybody to participate in?
So when we went to NHMA, they told us that if we're discussing compensation or job descriptions, no different than how you'll be in non-public today discussing job descriptions, that it would be in non-public session.
Why? I don't understand.
Because of 91A says if you're talking about compensation or any of those other issues, it would be non-public. That's the direction we were given from NHMA.
So I think the answer was given, so I think people, if you're talking about a particular job description and a person, right? Because that was, that's the explanation that, does that person not have the right to be present or to have that discussion in public according to the RSA?
They... The, if we are having a discussion about a particular person, we, we are usually comparing it to the data that is available. And then if we have a question or anything comes up, we have been meeting with that department or that person and reviewing their job description with them before going back and discussing it with the Wage Matrix. So most of our discussions are happening within a department where we have the Wage Matrix is, has people that are working and talking to the different departments. And then we'll sit down and have a discussion to verify that their job description, where the data is showing. And we're doing that within each department once we get all the data together.
And not with the full committee?
Not with the full committee.
Not with what full committee?
The Wage Matrix. It's not, not every discussion with a department individual, employee is with the whole committee.
And then we take that discussion back and summarize it for the committee.
Right.
And where's, so the minutes that have been provided for the public meetings, there's really no information in there. So you can't summarize what you, what you can't, you can't even summarize the job descriptions that you talked about? I mean, there's, it doesn't seem like there's any transparency in what's going on in this... The answer is everything is, has to be held in non-public, but then you're gonna present information, and there's no transparency in how you're getting there?
Some of it, I think, is due to how we, we started over a year ago. We did not have agendas. We did not have minutes. So a lot of what we're doing is following up on items that we discussed or reviewed in previous non-public. So, or not even a meeting, because we didn't, we weren't... We are under the assumption that as a working group, we did not have to have agendas. We've clarified that since March, so now we're going into non-public. So our minutes, we, moving forward, will have a summary of what was discussed in our non-public session. So we were doing the agenda, we were doing the minutes. Most of our discussions are in non-public. Some of them have been in public, and then we go into non-public. So a summary of what we discussed will go in the June 12th minutes moving forward. So without a template or information, we didn't, we weren't doing them correctly, I guess.
I think the concern, from my point of view, is if, if the agenda said what department you were talking about, and then, you know, for instance, if it was about my position, you know, I wouldn't want to sit in. And, but I don't know when you're doing that. So it's not that I think anything's going wrong, but I had, I take an interest in that. And I might want to sit in on that discussion with the information that I gave you. So I think that's the...
Is that you were all in state for the non-public for the departments?
If you, if you chose to, you could ask to, because that's what the RSA says. I'm just saying, if you knew what it was about, I may or may not want to go, but it would be nice to know when it is, that's all. That should be, just general, what you're talking about should be on your agenda, to my way of thinking.
And I think it depends on who's had a chance to meet with the person and who, how it's gone. Wednesday, we'll be talking about Highway, but I've already notified Phil, we'll be meeting at 3:15 to talk about his data. So that's kind of when I know about that ahead of time, that is how I notify the department or the person that will be... And sometimes a discussion will lead to a different department because somebody will think about it, and it wasn't something that was on the agenda. But it's important that we relay that information and get additional information. So a discussion about Fire could lead to, oh, we need to check with Tammy for information on this person because this is kind of correlation.
I don't want, I don't want to beat this dead horse, but I would expect moving forward that the minutes are gonna be more robust because they say nothing, quite honestly. And for the non-public minutes, are those available to the Select Board to review?
They are in HR right now.
So are they available for the Select Board to review?
So from my perspective, this committee was formed as a joint committee between Select Board and Budget Committee. That is how we discussed it in December of 2022. That is how Chris explained it when we started in July of 2023, when we started this, that it was a joint and data would be reviewed so that if you would like to see the minute, the non-publics, you can go ahead and see the non-publics. But then they would be open to the Budget Committee as well.
It was my understanding that the Wage Committee was created at the purview of the Select Board and that the members were then...
No.
No. December 28th, 2023, the meeting was held at Budget Committee to create the Wage Matrix.
I thought the initial meeting was in, the initial meeting was 18 July.
That is correct.
By the Select Board.
The original meeting before that was a meeting, a joint meeting of the Select Board and the Budget Committee, where the Budget Committee requested that this be put together and that it would be a joint committee. When we went to the first committee meeting, we, Chris initiated it, and it was a joint committee between the Select Board and the Budget Committee. So the people that are represented of the Budget Committee are Budget Committee members, not appointed to the committee. They came from Budget Committee, and the Select Board put people on there. And so that was how it was established, and it was my understanding from the very beginning that this was a joint committee of the Select Board and the Budget Committee, and that all data would be presented to a joint committee and not to one board or the other board.
The whole purpose of forming the Matrix Committee, the Board agreed, the Select Board agreed to form the committee on, by the request of the Budget Committee so that we could more equitably move forward in wages. The Budget Committee was not happy with pay for performance and wanted a less subjective vehicle by which to review employees. As opposed to spending a million dollars or half a million dollars on a private consulting firm, we opted to go into a joint committee to review the wages and look at other towns and come up with some recommendations on how to move forward with less subjective criteria, if you will. So it was, it was formed, before we, before the Wage Matrix Committee started, it was formed as a result of an agreement between the Budget Committee and the Select Board so that we would accept what was at that time for wage increases in anticipation of moving forward with the Wage Matrix. So, and in support of, I mean, we didn't, we did not, we thought of ourselves as a working group, not as a task force more than a committee, which is why initially minutes were not taken. And it was not generally open to the public. But regardless, that, that committee is gonna report out to both groups, and it's still ample opportunities to tweak, revise, and whatever, because it's a recommendation. It's not cast in concrete, and we hope it moves forward because a lot of work has gone into it. However, it still comes out, everything becomes public within another, what, four, six weeks and, and subject to debate and discussion and review and input from staff and committee members alike.
I think the weirdest thing about this group is that a lot of our data, a lot of the work is done outside of... of the meeting. So when I go and collect data, when I go and talk to department heads and I ask them about job descriptions and how their, how their department is structured and their establishment of how long... So like, if you look at our, going back to the July 18th meeting, we had certain criteria, and we picked three departments at first, and we wanted to know employee, how long have they been here? What their current wage is, what their job is, all of that information. We review all that information every time, we go and collect that outside of it. Then we review that information and have that information up when we have our meetings. So it becomes a, you know, we have job descriptions. We went, we tried to do some of it by title. Fire and Police were very easily done by title. The rest of the town, not, not so much. I think that is where we've struggled over the last six months. It has been more difficult than for the, for particularly Town Hall to kind of parse out and understand how we're looking at different towns, like, you know, a great example is Chester and how they're set up versus how we are set up, but we're similar towns. And that's where we get into the, we're gonna share all the information, but we don't have all of that information in a spreadsheet. So once we have it all together, we are gonna share everything that we have. And we're trying to not put out the information potentially like we did prior in December where we weren't done analyzing a certain group, and we said this is where they are right now. I don't think that did any justice for our employees or for the taxpayers to think we had a group that was at a certain level where we didn't, where all we did was draw, compare job title to job title. I think it did an injustice, and I don't want to do that again, which is why we're trying to keep things non-public until we have all the data and we put it together and it's reviewed by the department head. I don't want to go down that path. I think we want, we're trying to be fair to the taxpayers of this town and to the employees of this town. And that is where my struggle is with sharing information as we go together because if we share something this week, next week, we might have data that's gonna skew that data, and we're constantly adjusting and skewing that data for a position, for a department. I think once we're done with that analysis, everything's gonna be made public, and we'll have it all. But at this point in time, I'm nervous about sharing... we'll have it all, but at this point in time, I'm nervous about sharing, particularly there's some positions that we need to dig in a little more on.
So I, I appreciate that explanation and, and not being subject to this wage matrix. There's, in the absence of information, people make up their own, okay? And, and that's the problem. And with minutes weren't posted until June, so even though, you know, you knew in March, minutes weren't posted until June. And, um, and then there was no information. So, um, like I said earlier, I, I would expect to see in the future some more robust minutes because people are going to make up their own stories and they are. Um, and, and then at the end of a year and a half or however long you present this information, like this is people's lives we're talking about and they're not being provided information. And I understand the situation that you're in, that's kind of tough. Um, but we need to be mindful that the conversations occurring, um, the transparency isn't there and we just need to be mindful of that.
And if, and I would say if any employee would like to see where they are in where we are with that particular position, they are more than welcome to reach out to anyone on the wage matrix and we can tell them where we are with that specific role, where we are, where, um, I know that I met with an employee in town hall a couple of weeks ago and I said, I need to understand more of your position before I complete this analysis because I don't think it's where it needs to be. And we, we did get some more information and we, we realized that, yeah, what the job title is, is nothing close to what they're doing and then gave her some examples of other towns and various positions and that's allowing us to have that conversation. And I think any person who wants to come forward and say, hey, we, can we, can you do that with my position? I have no problem sitting down with them and explaining where they are at, where we are at with that position. Um, it's just, it has been a lot of work gathering the data and putting it together and we need to be careful when we make certain information. I feel more comfortable making the information, particularly on some departments, once we have done the complete analysis, because I don't think, if we did it in pieces, it would be too confusing.
The other thing I'll, I'll say by sitting on the board is the, we're sitting on the committee, the, we have reached out to pretty much every department. So police, fire, highway, uh, rec, I believe we reached out to assessing, Tammy. So like, it's not like we're, well, we're not trying or doing everything behind closed doors. We're reaching out to get their job descriptions, you know, Manchester just paid over a million dollars to get this done. Now granted, they have 10 times the employees we do, I get it, but the savings and I guess sometimes you have to believe in the process. And I, I know that's easy to say because I'm behind the scenes with a lot of things, but same thing with the benefits committee, same thing with, you know, you guys have the final say. So if you don't like the numbers and the bud, with this, the budget committee and you guys, you know, then you go, tell us, go back to the drawing board and say, hey, Joel's lieutenant, he can't, he can't only work for 95 grand, you know, 10 years from now, we got to adjust that. And it, it's going to be a living document as well that will adjust over the years with COLA, with uh, you know, rate increases, all that good stuff, so.
And people, everyone has to understand that this is, we're doing research, so that's all we've done. We haven't made any decisions, we haven't finalized anything, we're researching right now. So for us to share every single aspect, things will get out and then people will assume things and then we'll get in trouble. So we just have to, and so that's why we haven't like fully shared everything because we're still gathering all the information. Once we have everything, then we'll be able to share it with the public and the boards and the employees and not, we're not making any final decisions. This committee does not make any final decisions.
I think just off of what Susan was saying is, I, I think you have a very flexible interpretation of 91A in this, because if you're discussing compensation in a specific employee, that's covered under 91A, but just broad discussions on someone's work and compensation for the position, not saying like, Phil's really lazy and he doesn't show up until two hours after his shift starts, that's a 91Aable.
We're not allowed to say that.
You can say it all you want, but.
He was.
Um, I, I, I just think it's been a year and people are seeing these non-public sessions gone into without even the basic information of what's being discussed in the non-public. And I, I understand that NHMA told you, you know, but compensation is also, we've also published that in the town report, it's, it's a matter of public record. So I, I just think we need to be careful when we're going into these non-public sessions that they're targeted and, you know, open to whoever it pertains to.
And that's fair. I think, um, I guess I don't know, I guess this is my concern is I just don't know where the discussion's going to lead. And so if I put, we're going to discuss Department of Public Works on Wednesday at 3:15, I don't know if that discussion is going to lead into the town clerk's office, because we are constantly updating and getting information and so we may have that discussion, we'll, we know we're talking about public works, but then all of a sudden, oh wait, I got this information and I have this update to give the group. And I think that's where it gets a little confusing more as a working group, because all of the work, all of the data collection is outside of the meeting and then we go in and I don't, you know, as of, you know, 9:30 this morning, I know I'm talking about public works, but by tomorrow at 9:30, I might have an update that I got information from Plastow or Chester or some other group that came in through email or phone call or something. And I think that's where we're struggling, because it's data collection and I give the group, we give the group an update and that could change all the way until 3:15 on Wednesday. I think that's, I don't know how to capture that, but I am more than willing to try to capture that and to make the information, but I just, do you, you know.
No, I, I know it's not an easy answer.
Yeah, I just don't know.
And I mean.
I don't.
Made us, at us the whole time we were trying to work on, you know, gathering data and stuff, it's, I, I completely appreciate the situation you're in, I just think, again, it's people's livelihood, so they are just very sensitive to how it's applied.
That, I understand that, but I'm, I'm also, I feel like we're walking a tight rope.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because the more, because if we make information and it's not fully collected and it's not fully analyzed, people interpret that as one way. If we don't give information, people think we're doing something wrong or nefarious and that's not it at all. We, we're literally talking about 21 different towns' data with dozens of employees fitting in that. And, and that is where we struggle with how to hold the meeting, what to make public and non-public.
It, it's still in her just to have that department that you're going to discuss on the agenda, so the person has an opportunity to say, I would like to have it open or be there. And if you go into something else, then you have to go into non-public, then you do, you know, into a separate issue.
That's, that's fine, I can do that moving forward.
And I still think that if it's just like, oh, an update, I got more information from Chester, that's not really in non-public.
So in, in the 91A, and you, you obviously know this better than we do, so you're talking about my contract after this meeting in non-public. Can I request to be in that meeting?
Yes.
I would like to be in that meeting.
Yep.
Okay, we ready to move on, ladies and gentlemen? I think so. Thank you, Mrs. Dyer. All right, we're going to, uh, yes, Mr. Butler.
I was hoping to go towards the beginning because we have a big Olympics against Brentwood today.
Okay, I'll let you start right now.
Okay. I didn't have to go first, I just didn't want to.
Go right ahead.
Um, camp is going well. Um, we do have, I'm excited, we finally got the, Brentwood comes to us to go swimming and I can now use their van, probably not till the fall because they use it during the summer. Uh, but they are coming for an Olympics and we're going there for an Olympics, um, which I think will be exciting. I think there's a lot of good sharing of information and ideas between the counselors, um, right from the get-go, so that was really good. We went to Foster's clam bake, the seniors did, um, a few weeks ago. We have a trip going to Winnebago for a cruise and a buffet lunch and we're starting to talk about trunk or treat. Um, I think it's going to be October 14th, but I'm not positive of that, but we're starting to think about that because it's kind of a big, big venture, so, but I think that's it.
Any questions for Paul? Thank you. Melissa Mannan, library director. You're next, good morning.
Our big news is that we just hired at the library.
Microphone.
At the library, we just.
Don't laugh at me.
First you tell me, I come in the wrong door.
I thought you did.
I didn't. Just mind your own business.
Wow, I have to go now.
Uh, at the library, we've hired a landscape architect. We formerly, or we do have a concept plan for the outdoor space, but we are getting more detailed, which will allow us to go for those grants we're looking for. That was a big thing we were missing in the CDFA grant. Um, so we are going to be, we haven't signed a contract yet, but we're working with Ironwood, which did the project over in, at the Brentwood library that they just finished. Um, what we are doing is, just as a reminder, we're building pathways all around the library so people can walk. There are going to be ADA accessible pathways that go into our trail, um, which will also be made ADA accessible. We're putting in a children's outdoor playground, which will be very different from the other playgrounds in town and it'll be using natural resources, like so kids can do building, fairy gardens, that kind of thing, making use of our woods. We're also building what's called, some places call it an older or an adult playground, but it's really some athletic equipment that help people loosen up their shoulders and help with stretching, flexibility, strengthening. Um, we are also hoping to build a pavilion, which is how this project started, so we can do, uh, have some bands come and, and kids can do stage shows and that kind of thing. So we are hoping that by this fall, we will have a full plan. Our light, our new library foundation is seeking funding and we've had some businesses express interest in providing some funding for this, um, in addition to the grants that we're seeking. Um, so that's, that's the big news, we're very excited about that. Um, we are partnering with, we, I've talked to AARP, 4H is also interested in helping us and we've got some other big organizations that have expressed interest as well as some local businesses. Um, in terms of 4H, we are starting up 4H at the library. Uh, this will be a general 4H where kids can do crafting and outdoorsmanship and we have, uh, people in the community who are volunteering to lead one or two sessions a year. The library will serve as, uh, the overseer, the administrator handling funding with UNH. Um, and then we'll have people, uh, like, uh, Evy Nathan has said that she would join us with the conservation commission, she's not still here, but, uh, people with expertise in outdoorsmanship and crafting will be, will be joining us and we see it as a, a nice opportunity for intergenerational mixing. Um, and there is no other program like this nearby, Candia is the closest one, so there, there is a need here for that and 4H is excited because they're real, we're really working hand in hand, um, to build something different than what 4H usually does to get adults involved as well as kids. And then the final thing we have, the big thing we have going on is our imagination festival, it'll be our third annual one. Um, this is on August 10th. Um, the magician is coming back for the third year, he's one of the most popular things we have at the library, the kids love him. Um, we're also having another costume parade and we're doing something this year, a little different, that we're calling imagination station. So after the magician leaves, we're going to have a little farm area set up with a petting zoo so kids can pretend that they're farmers and rotate through that. We're going to have an Olympics area where kids can participate in sports. Um, and then the, I'm forgetting the final thing we're having, um, but all different stations for kids to play and imagine and we have a bunch of volunteers this year helping us, so I think it's going to be a lot of fun for the kids. So a lot going on at the library, summer reading's going really well and we just keep on, keep on doing our thing.
Thank you, Mrs. Mannan. Any questions? Okay, next, Pedro Avia, our building inspector, code enforcement and chief cook and bottle washer downstairs.
Well, we have, um, we're very busy, phone calls are extremely high volume. Uh, working with Peter Begil, as my liaison with regards to the solar farm that is taking place, we have already, uh, getting to the details about cost for permitting on that. Uh, I did also some research in, in that matter. Sometimes, uh, understand that the full fee should be charged, other towns, uh, said that it has to be done with caution because that is, uh, that is a building code that states that utility companies shall not be charged a fee. The problem is that that code also expand and state that they cannot be charged a fee only if and when they are doing their own utility work and they are the owners of the utility equipment. In this case, Revision Energy is the owner of the utility equipment and Revision, uh, Solar, uh, Revision is also doing the installation and maintenance. So, uh, they are not part of the utility and that's why we have to assess it as a separate entity. Uh, very detailed set of plans, uh, being cut of car with a couple of items, uh, there is a solar storage, um, areas in there. Um, I don't know if that was discussed with the town previously, um, trying to get other information from the, um, the engineer out of Bedford that is in charge of the project. Um, and like I said, a lot of work into that, a lot of work into that. Um, that being said, that we got a lot of complaints with regards to access ways and, and, uh, share roads, uh, well, not only roads, but, but access to, uh, one of them is, uh, Babs Call Lane, Power River area. Um, a lot of complaint in that area, uh, out of, um, one resident. Uh, we have contacted the resident already, uh, we're working to try to get certain things going on and moving along. Uh, a lot of inspections with regards to building, uh, health and code enforcement. And, uh, I believe one of the key items, uh, cloud permitting. We have a stark kickoff meeting, informal meeting today at 2:00, where it's going to be discussed, the program for the building department alone. And then from there, we're going to depart to, reaching out to all the department and do a more formal meeting that is going to be scheduled with all the participants and all the other town departments with regards to that. We're still having the third of the month, Thursday of every month, we're still having the department, um, head meetings, no, department heads, community development meetings, uh, where we discuss current projects and, uh, prayers that are in place, uh, things that are taking, uh, place in town, concerns, uh, questions any department have and, uh, just having a, the interactive community, communication among different departments to see where we are at. We recently have a car drive-through, Kingston Pizza, yeah, they, they said that they needed a drive-through, so they just went through it. No. So, uh, we did close for a couple of days, the, the pizza place. Um, I explained to the homeowner that the area where the impact took place was a very key, very delicate area, because those studs project all the way to the roof beam. Uh, there was misleading communication that there was a beam separating the, the portion of the roof and, uh, header area of the windows. After doing further research and going there and assessing the thing, we realized that the header stopped about six inches past the window. Therefore, uh, it was very concerning, structural items, I told them that they need to get a structural engineer involved, they're trying to get plants, uh, they did a temporary repair and, uh, per code, they're allowed to have 180 days to mitigate the rest of it. So, uh, so right now they know and, uh, they are aware, they have, they have 180 days to, uh, get compliant plans and get a structural engineer involved so that we can do that. Um, I was made aware that this is the fourth time that a car.
It's been ten.
Well, yes. Well, yes. Yes, wanted to get some fast food going. But I explained that two times was too much, that we don't want to wait till a fatality to get full enforcement into this. At this time, also, they are mandated to put a protection guard in front of the establishment, because it's too low of a step, and that can keep being an issue. And the codes require that they have guard protection.
Is that going to be, is the request that you're making across the entire...
Yes.
...frontage of that building?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And would it be bollards or guardrail or...
Yes, they have, they actually have to have a engineer, because there are three items, there are three things that take into, they are taken into consideration. One, the type of construction, in this case, is 5B. 5B just reflect that is flammable with studs, that is non-protected. Then the distance, projection, separation between wall and walkway or path area, which is required by code to be not less than five feet. That one is not reaching five feet. So there is some concern areas there. The other thing is that those pathway, because they are not projecting past the actual amount that they could reflect, those exterior walls shall be fire rated for two hours for whoever is walking on that plaza is protected in the event of a fire in the inside of the pizza area, or any other commercial space in there. So we're tackling one step at a time.
Okay. And I'm assuming you're working with the property owner who is not one of the business owners at this time?
Yes. So we have been communicating via email, and I show Susan last week that I have in the shared drive something called the Street Files. Reason being is because I have, every address that I have come in contact with is listed within that Street File, and then within those addresses, a specific address that I went to, and within that, there is all my communications, everything that I have discussed, everything that I do in writing, because I, by now, being almost seven months here, have been heard a lot of, well, the previous building inspector told me. So I said, with me, it's not what he told me, but what he writes. So it's no, there is no break line there. If I say something, it's gonna be put in black and white, if not, I didn't say it. So you gotta get those things corrected. But everything is moving along. We just have a really high workload volume right now. We're addressing it. I came here Saturday to work for three hours, so I can match up as I'm, there is me, and I just have to make sure that I'm a head, that way I don't fall behind.
Do we have any update on the health officer?
We, so far, we have two. I have contacted DES, Sophia Johnson, she's the director for DES, and she's also passing around the communication, that we have an open position, that way we can get a good hand of applicants and go through them, and make sure that we have right feet for the needs of the town.
Thank you. Any other questions for Pedro?
I have two questions.
Yep.
So a couple residents have asked about the house on Scotland Road, the one that burned. Do we have a status on if it's...
Yes.
...a demolition?
Yes. So there are many areas on that one, but the homeowner, or the daughter of the homeowner came, they're working with the insurance. They are already starting the process to get things cleaned out of there. They're working also to get proper construction documents in place to rebuild the place. So there is work moving along. We issue a final demo permit, because they're gonna be also taking away part of the structure that is still standing, but it's a process in the middle. They're working with the insurance, and there is a lot of questions on the insurance and towards the homeowner, which is making the process to work a little bit slower than what we want to, but they are aware that we want things to be moving along a little bit more faster. So, and they're doing the best. They are keeping communication with the town, and that's something that I appreciate, because at least we have the answers in the event questions arise.
Great, thanks. And I do want to say I appreciate your weekly recaps. It gives us an insight into just how busy you are. In the last one that you provided, you talked about documents being required when folks are converting their seasonal to year-round, right? How is that being communicated to the public? Because now you're requiring six documents before you look at that. So how is that being communicated?
Yes. So right now, we haven't, we don't have too many of those type of projects. However, it's starting to grow with the sale of a couple of properties in those areas that have seasonal properties. So is, the reason why I sent that email is because one prospect owner came and asked me, what was the process? We didn't have a process. So I believe to have something that creates a parameter, we have procedures, but those procedures don't have a process involved. And the main key in this aspect is that these properties are substandard to our ordinances, whether loss size, location, not compliance with setbacks and things of that nature. So we wanna be able to see the whole picture. I wanna be able to see the whole picture from the beginning, so that I can pass along information to the board, that is the body that has to make those decisions, that is clear enough, so that they can make an educated decision on that. Because the biggest thing that we have is our natural resources here in town, and those are the ones that are mostly concerned to protect when they're coming.
No, I understand all of that, and I can appreciate why you need to do that. But I guess my question is, if I were in that position, do I have to call you to find out what's required? Or, but I can't go on the website and figure it out?
Well, yes, because like I said, it is not a common aspect, and there might be other things that can be seen, but again, I only, we only had one project, which was, I believe, 10 Ninth Street, what was the first one, when I first started it. And then we have now 24th or 24th Street, which is the one that I've been getting the question on. So there are more questions that I still don't know if we are tackling the whole process, and to place something in the public eye, to then add more, can be leading to confusion or frustration in the process. So we don't want to do that.
So Lori and Pedro, maybe, could there at least be a statement on the website under the building department, that if someone is gonna be undertaking this activity, that they need to contact the building inspector? Or even if the full process isn't laid out, or all the documents aren't there, at least notification?
I think for the most part, the documents we actually have in place for, you build a house for a residence, it's a minimum square footage. You have to have the life safety, the windows, the insulation, the inspections, the requirements are septic. And if you think you're gonna buy a property that has a shed on it and turn it into a house, it's not gonna happen. They have to meet those requirements. And even though, I don't think you can say, only for a summer residence, it's for a building. And we have building codes, and that building has to meet all those codes. Period. I mean, they can't, they just can't turn a shed into a house.
Right.
I mean, there's a lot of things, the size of the windows. We do have a minimum size building in this town for residents, 600 square feet, isn't it, Pedro?
Yes.
So there are a lot of applications they gotta look at before they think they're gonna turn, I hate to say, a camper, a shed into a house. I think we have those codes already in place.
Yes, and then there is also the question on how this was built. I mean, is it a mold home? Does it has a permanent foundation? Is it building not justice? What are the conditions? I mean, it was built for a seasonal purpose. Does it meet energy conservation code? I mean, like I said, it's not a straight path, and even though you try, you kind of separate yourself from the process and try to see the thing as a general, even with the process that I instituted, you still can have questions afterwards. So that's why, there is not a set path, full path yet, because we don't have much of those. And then the other thing is, you hear, oh, well, my family member was living there year-round. You go, good to know, I guess. The best with what we have, with what we have in hand, and I'll be able to...
In other words, it's too soon to make a set procedure, number one.
Yes.
Number two, I'm not sure we want to advertise a procedure, because that would encourage others to try to change seasonal homes to year-round. I'm not sure we want to go down that road at all.
That is correct.
But, so, the software that you're going to be installing?
Yes.
Will there be a button there, that if I'm the homeowner and I buy a seasonal, that I can click on, transfer a seasonal into year-round, and then it shows me the steps?
Yes, all that will be instituted. And the best thing is that, not only they will be able to see that, but the whole idea is so that when people do that, or department pertaining to that change, can get communication. This is trying to go, this is what we have going, and this is the intent, so that everybody's in the loop of communication. With regard so, to also, to that note, it's not only the intent, and as it's been said, we don't want to project, hey, just do it throughout. There are properties that are very substandard, and there are reasons to be concerned. Where is your septic is gonna go? Now, you're proposing a two-bedroom, but we cannot blame somebody of a crime if they haven't committed the crime, but you end up having more conditions there that you cannot assess from the beginning. And Wally Point Road, I just encountered a finished basement that had a bedroom in there, no smoke alarms, no permits were done, and I was misled by Safelight, or Surf Pro, showing a water damage to what is in my first floor, because they show it as the entrance of the house with the stairs and things like that. For me, it was plain level. Well, I came to the same house, it just happened to be the basement level. So now we're dealing with a different situation. So you, I want to be able to, it's not that the town wants to inhibit people from doing what they need to do, but there are things that we need to protect, and that's why we have policies and procedures in place, because this can adversely affect our way of living in town. So we want to make sure of that. And then the biggest thing is, as you mentioned, egress window. Right now, I'm dealing with three companies, one of them rescinded the permit, or at least that's what they say, that they want to try to change windows to properties. Well, you cannot change a substandard window on a bathroom for a new window and keep it substandard. You gotta bring that window to become an egress window, and they don't understand that. Why, I'm just changing windows for windows. Yeah, but you have a window on a bathroom that should have served for means of egress, and it's not meeting that, now you gotta change that window. You might be able to have the same size, but it cannot be a double hall at this time. It can be a casement window, and it has to be open 90 degrees and all this, and they don't kind of want to do that, that way, but there is no other way around.
So we just finished the tax season. We have $613,000 outstanding for all years, which is not bad. We have 64 dogs that are not licensed. The animal control officer has started going door-to-door to try and bring those residents into compliance. We just completed our DMV audit, and we passed with a perfect score. I have applied for a grant to obtain additional money to restore the old books that are in my vault. Don't know if I'll get it, but I both thought it was worth a shot. Election coming up, August 28th. We're having training up here for the primary, for people only that are gonna work at the primary. The primary is September 10th. I don't expect a huge turnout, there's not a lot on the ballot. It's not even a full page for both Republican and Democrats. So in 2020, we had 1,400 people come vote, and 2022 was 1343. So I don't expect a big turnout, but I will expect to see all your smiling faces there.
September 10th?
September 10th, yep. And if you can't be there, you'll have to appoint someone in your place. I'd like, I think, Phil, are you gonna talk about the shredding event? So Phil's gonna talk about the shredding event, but I want to put my two cents in, yet again, that I think it'd be a perfect opportunity to take everything out of that closet downstairs, lay it all out on tables out here, invite everybody, every committee, every board to come in and look at what's there, and get rid of it. It would also be a great opportunity to clean out those file cabinets that maybe we could have keyed, so that different committees and boards could have a draw that locks to keep non-public minutes, or whatever else they want to keep, that have a spot for them. And that's my two cents.
Good training, you said September 14th, training for the one in Derry.
Yes.
Closest one to us is Atkinson.
Yeah, there's trainings coming up. I'm actually gonna be going to the one in Derry, but this is training just for our ballot clerks to learn how to mark the checklist.
Thank you.
I've been setting up meetings and meeting with health insurance companies, one being the one we use currently, and then trying to get together with a couple others to get quotes and pricing of what they offer, and so I'll be gathering that data. I have been trying to start to get my stuff ready for budget season, and then when Stacy said that she needs the budget by September 18th?
18th or 19th.
Right. So what I need from, so I was gonna send an email out, but what I need from all the departments and committees is, I need your budgets by September 4th, so that I could look at them, update my spreadsheet, talk to you if I have questions or whatnot, so that I could send it to the Budget Committee by September 11th. They like to have it a week ahead of time.
Probably should send out an email.
I am, yep.
And will you send out a proposed little sheet?
Yep. I'll be sending out all that together. I've been working on a policy for Human Resource Department. I've been working on some other policies, trying to get that stuff together, and then Wage Matrix. Just been busy.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Mahoney?
Yeah, I have a question. There was a question a couple weeks ago about the leave accrual policy, and I was trying to get clarification. Can you provide that? It's in the, in the...
Vacation time.
In the, yeah. It states in the policy, one to seven years, you get two weeks. I know it's changing, but we're going by what's posted. So you had given guidance that it was at six years, and I asked for clarification, and I haven't. So I'm asking for clarification that I haven't received.
So I have a spreadsheet that I keep track manually of all the vacation and sick time, because our accounting software doesn't accrue it properly. And I go by what our personnel manual says, so I have it, and I have everyone's date of hires. The way, oh, I thought he was telling me to... The way that I work it is, at the beginning of the year, if I know that you have, you're gonna be here for, I'll say, seven years or whatever, and it's November, I put the time in at the beginning of the year, because it's easier, and you're gonna get it anyway. And then if it's December, then now you only have a month to spend, to take that week vacation that you get, or the additional time. The only people that that doesn't follow under are new employees, and, because they're in like a temp...
Stent.
...status, and everybody is under the same guidelines and rules. No one has special treatment, everybody has, follows under the same rules.
So it's consistent?
Yep.
So I think I, the only problem I have with that is it's not following our policy, because our policy says at seven years, they get two weeks, not at six years and one month.
So here's the thing, like she said, if you started in November, that means you only get some... Correct. But you, if you wanted to do it as at the anniversary date, now that person only... Correct, but if you wanted to do it as at the anniversary date, now that person only has a month to take it, and what if that's your really busy time? So what she does is she frontloads it. So then if so that person left before that, then they would have to take that out of the remaining check.
So then the policy should be changed on how we're implementing it, because you're giving somebody vacation that they haven't earned yet. If the policy says anniversary date is November, and you're giving them their whole extra week 11 months early, we're not following what the policy says.
Then we need to change the policy.
That's what I'm saying. So we're not, we're not following the policy the way it's written. And I will take away everyone's extra week that got it for this year so far.
I don't think that's...
And I will update the policy.
No, 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 we're not saying take away.
Well, you just said to update the policy. We have to have it consistent.
Hala, hala. I agree, we have to be consistent. It doesn't mean that they lose the time, we just have to change the policy to reflect that the crew time is established at the beginning of the year. We're not saying take away time.
This is, this is the way it's been done for the last 20 years, as far as I know.
Then the policy should reflect the way that it's done, not have it be contrary, because if I look at the policy, it says one thing, and it's being implemented differently.
But there's a difference between policies and accounting procedures.
There's not, though.
There is.
So there doesn't need to be an argument, I'm just trying to get clarification on why the policy is being implemented differently than what it states. That's all.
To me, the policy isn't there. The practice has to be done. That's what we need to do. I do not look at any of that. The accounting practice needs to be converted into the policy.
The policy needs to be converted to what the practice is. Like I said, it has been this way.
I understood, I understood.
We're not saying to change the practice, just updating the policy to reflect the accounting procedure used to implement the time, the leave time, okay? Thank you.
I don't have a lot. Durham Bus Company notified us that they're no longer able to service our vehicles. They're our auto repair company, they're up in Brentwood. They've been great, they're cheaper than anybody else around, they work with our schedule, they pick up trucks, they deliver them. So I'm looking, and I've talked to Sean to get some ideas from him as well, from Highway, DPW, sorry. So I'll be reaching out to like New England Truck Center and a couple other big companies, because they, we need to get annual inspections done and preventative maintenance on all of our big trucks, as well as our small trucks. Durham said that they'd service us until December 31st of this year to give us some time to find somebody else, so I have some feelers out to try to figure out a way to be able to save some money as well, but...
Why is it that they're not going to be able to service our stuff?
I think they're too busy with their own stuff.
Okay.
Durham Bus, they have thousands of buses on the road.
Sure, right.
Thank you. Any questions? Thanks, Chief.
Sorry. Yeah, like I said, report, other things are going good. Here's a copy of our recent stats. We have slowed down just a little bit, but that's it. Short, sweet.
I just want to add that Chief Johnson sent a couple of officers to the library to do a presentation that I forgot to mention, and it went really well, and it was really nice of you to send people. We had several people in the audience who came away with a lot of information that I think will be helpful, and hopefully we'll do it again and get more people to come to talk about fraud issues and safety. So thank you, Chief.
And last but certainly not least, Phil Coombs, Public Works.
Thank you. In no particular order, the usage of the front stairs. So the front stairs are closed. Someone keeps ripping my ribbons off of there, but we're not putting blocking up, because if there were a fire here, people could still get out, but if anyone's opening a meeting or anything like that, just use the door in back and keep the front door unlocked, please.
Phil, I was noticing that on the inside of the doors, it says, "Don't use it as an exit," which is a good thing, because people would go, "Weep." Is there a sign on the outside saying not to use the door coming in?
There was, but it keeps getting modified, so we're going to get some better signage today to get that addressed. So just an update on that, we had the geotechnical engineer come out, and we did a test pit. We're probably going to have to do some substantial addition to the material that's there, and it's not looking, well, everybody else had the idea to utilize the concrete subbase that was there, so there's block in some parts of it, rebar in others, bricks in others, so I think more than likely the architect's going to say that we're just abandoning that and pouring a new one. So that is going to add to the cost, but I think that's part of our heaving issues. So we had a bulky waste event at the collection center last weekend, and it was a big success. We had 111 users, which is our highest daily total. Special thanks to the Town Clerk Tax Collector for providing us with a cashier for the event. Caitlin did a great job, and all of our volunteers, as always, were a great asset. So our intent is to do an event each month at the collection center. So the next one will be a shredding event on the 17th of August. This is also for any of the departments, as was stated, if we want to get that closet cleaned out, or if anybody is going through and needs stuff shredded. We just need it by the 15th, because we have it locked up in a storage container down there at the state shed, so we will come get it from your office, and we can bring it down there, but just as you're going through, if you need something shredded, 15th is your date. So we've got final scheduled date of possibly next week for the remainder of the paving, so we're going to try and have a meeting. One of the criticisms we had is we didn't put enough information out there, and since where we're going to be working on Winslow Park Beach and the other one, what's that one next to you? No.
Next to me?
Yeah, Webster Landing. So there will be, it'll be a longer duration than a typical shim and overlay or just shim, so we're going to be letting the people know that, plus we're going to be doing some crack sealing and things, so I was hoping for this Thursday at 6:00 PM, if there's no other events going on, we were going to publicize to have it in the town hall here. If that's all right? Planned on it, but not the exits. Okay, and if we could just line up video recording of that, so if anybody can't make it, it's available to them. Okay? We will have crack sealing going on outside of that particular area. It's the side streets on Rock Remen is where we'll be looking at, but there will be, it'll be going on in other areas, so just FYI on that. Also, receiving assistance from the Town Clerk's office on getting the pole licenses categorized in an Excel spreadsheet. It's a lot of information, and they're doing a great job on it. This is going to help us with our double pole issue, but I also think for a taxation standpoint, as the utilities are our two biggest taxpayers, there's probably a lot of things there that aren't captured between the licenses and what's actually out there. So once we get that database, we're actually going to go through and do a physical inventory of all the poles and know what we have in town and be able to hold the utilities accountable for those things. So I think that will benefit us a lot in the long term.
Thanks, Tammy, for jumping in on that one.
We will be painting the cell station after the blockwork, which is complete, and the electricity's back on, so the painting will be taking place probably the end of this week. We've got some rain coming in the next couple days, but that's going to be going on. As you're, as we're getting midway through summer, if there's stuff you want to see in your offices, or winter projects for the building and grounds crew, if you want to just set up a meeting, I can come out and meet with you, and we can just run through them, and that way I can kind of prioritize things as necessary. The one thing we are going to have to address, probably, well, definitely before the architect is complete, is the buried tank will not be filled by our oil provider. So what I'm proposing is just putting, we have, it was brand-new, the one we pulled out of the museum, and we have another oil tank, but just setting up oil tanks at each furnace instead of one massive one. So we're looking into that, just to get that set up with the oil company, and so we can continue to have heat.
Are those traditional, like 275 gallons?
Yes, yep. And we, we kind of collect those for the waste oil, so that we can store more on-site, but we have some that are in really good shape that can fill this temporary purpose. Just wanted to check to make sure that the contracts for the snow drivers that were approved last year are good to go, because I'm locking guys in for the following year, if there's any changes we want to look at or...
I thought we were going to update for the insurance, because last year it was too late, so I thought this year we were going to add all of that in.
And I know the discussion was that we, whether we needed that or not.
Please add a discussion on plow drivers for our next meeting. I think we do need to review it, because we had, there was some question about the insurance in particular. We waived it this past year, and we may need to waive it again, but let's at least have some time to talk about it, think about it.
Yep, that's why I'm bringing it up now, so we're not at the 11th hour. And the posting has gone out for our open position of a truck driver, equipment operator. We've already received 10 applications. That was posted on Thursday. I would say eight of them are very qualified, and so that's much better than the last time we posted a position. I think we got five over the space of six months, so we've got 10 within a few days, and some very promising opportunities there with people, so...
Phil, is this for someone who is at a position that you lost?
Yeah, we had, we had a gentleman who moved out of town. Moved down south, too expensive to live in Kingston, so... And then the last thing is, there's a PO for Bell &amp; Flynn. This was covered under the original PO for Hot Mix, but we did do the parking lot at the police station, which should have come out of capital improvements, and so this is just assigning that under the appropriate line item.
One thing, Phil, quick question on the shredding event.
Yep.
Is that for the municipalities only, or is that open to the public?
That, so that's open to the public.
Is there a cost involved?
Yes, there is, sorry. So there is, I believe it's $5 a box, if you have a full-size legal box, it's five or 10, and I will clarify that, but...
Thank you.
And just a note on the bulky day, we did cover our expenses for that with people, the user-funded fees, so I would call that a, it's always what we're searching for at the collection center, is cover things, so...
So what's the status of the electrical on the update on the plan?
No status at this time.
We have a, we have a schedule for him? Do we have, I mean, has he...
He's lined up, we just need to purchase the materials. What we're trying to do is get a trenching bucket, but the issue we have right now is scheduling it, and electrical materials have actually been going down in costs, so I've been kind of playing the market to hold off to the last minute on ordering the material. The Highway Crew has been basically doing drainage work in anticipation of paving, and that's been what we've had to do to just stay ahead of the paving crew. So once that's completed, we will have, you know, Tom and I went through, we've got the materials all on hand, they carry it all, so it's just going to be a matter of getting the guys freed up to do it, and rather than having the material sit around and...
So before we move on, could we make a decision about that closet downstairs, or we could put it off another 10, 15 years?
Where's the closet?
The closet, right under the stairs. It has like ZBA green cards from 20 years ago. It has so much junk in there that can be tossed, but those tables right there, if you want, I'll be in charge. I'll bring everything up, put it all out.
I'll go with the ZBA stuff.
I'm sorry?
I'll go with the ZBA stuff.
Yeah, but there's ZBA stuff, there's Conservation Commission, there's MAPS, there's all kinds of stuff.
Trustees of the trust fund.
So I would say, put it all out there.
It's in the vault, next to the elevator.
That black door.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Invite everybody to come look at it. You don't want it? We'll get rid of it. You have the shredding event.
Most of that stuff is a seven-year?
Yeah, well, I would have to look. I would have to look at the retention schedule.
When in doubt, if it's over seven years...
Throw it out.
Well, but some of the stuff is permanent.
Some is permanent.
You have to decide.
We contacted them all when we started doing the document management.
Right.
And some came down and some didn't, but trustees of the trust fund for one said, "No, we need to keep that." Oh, there it sits, so it may be part of it they don't need, or maybe they have another place they can put it, but that's a problem, because they don't have an office.
Correct, so then we could label the file cabinets and organize it and make it neat and get rid of all the other stuff that we don't need to keep.
How do we know what stuff to keep or not keep?
That's what I said, I'll put it all out on that table, invite every board, every committee, come look at it. You want to keep it? Great, we'll put it back down there.
But if I'm going to go through ZBA, you talked about the last 25 years, I've been there for most of those meetings, how do I know what needs to be kept by statute? I have no way of knowing.
I have the statute.
Oh, I see.
I'll print it out for each, and I have the statute, I have the record retention for every piece of paper.
That's what I need to know, I don't, if I go through it, how do I know what to keep, what to throw? Because I throw it all.
Well, you know, on, on stuff that's related to planning and zoning, I think that the town planner probably has a pretty good idea of what needs to be kept and what can be tossed, and, and he should be involved, and maybe Robin as well. But, yeah, this is in the vault, right?
This is in the, not my vault, in my office.
No, no, no.
The vault right under these stairs.
At the, at the end of the hallway.
Yes.
Yes. We may make a motion and just say, "Do it."
We'll just do it.
Do it.
It'll be done.
Okay. Knowing you, yes.
Tammy, did they...
Make sure we get there.
Thank you.
Did they ever get rid of the mold smell and all that in there? Did they ever get rid of the mold smell and the heavy mold that was in there? Keep in mind that if it's there, it's on all that stuff, so when you bring it all up here, there's going to be some smell that comes with it, that's...
Okay, but the shredding, he told us by August 15th, so that gives me two weeks to get it up here, go through it, and get it out of here.
No, that's fine, I'm just...
We can keep the windows open.
And wear those plastic glove things, too, because if you're...
So $10 per box on the shredding event, three for 25.
What size box?
The legal folder box.
Copy boxes?
Banker's box.
Yeah, banker's box, thank you.
Is that that copy paper box? Okay. Anything else for our department heads that...
Probably the policies. I don't know if they had any input.
Also, they should be aware that we're talking about changing the office hours for the Building Department. That's in part of your, other parts of your agenda under Old Business.
Resident-only parking policy, let's take care of that one first, and then the assessing, and then the assessing hours for vacations. Any questions, comments on the resident-only parking?
So I had made a suggestion that we maybe...
Thank you, Melissa.
Combine the price of the parking sticker and the key, the bolt-launch key. That bolt-launch key's been the same price since I started here, so maybe we could do the key and the sticker for $7 or something, or $8, and then...
Yeah, I put it in the one with notes, her comments are on there in the comment box.
box.
This is cheap, like...
The one that's got the pink, yeah.
I have it right here.
I don't know if anybody else wants one, there's some extra copies. Did you want to see this, Tammy? This is the, no?
Susan, were there other comments other than that?
Um, yes.
And I think, did you mention that some folks had said no, no fee for the sticker?
I had comments saying, why are we charging residents to park? So there's kind of going both ways. We did clarify the addresses that were already in there. There were some additional areas suggested, the car top boat launch, the state shed boat spots, the town forest, or cell trailheads, and spaces at the rec center. Those were some additional that were suggested, and also we cleaned up the language on the others. Yeah, and I made a comment, the fee and annual renewal were questioned. Need to decide whether to remove or modify, and then Tammy's comments were to combine. The price of the key has been $5 for at least seven years. We are charging $2 for the parking sticker. The key to the gate at Greenwood Pond privately owned is $20, maybe combine the key and parking for 10.
Mr. Coons?
I, I always ask this question when we implement a new fee, is are we going for compliance or money? And I think if we're trying to set aside an area for the residents, I think a one-time sticker, instead of creating the paperwork for Tammy each year and having to reorder them. I mean, if someone moves out of town, they typically move way out of town, so I think it's... And my other comment was on the trailheads, like, you know, during COVID, the trailheads got like massively overwhelmed, and people were parked up 107, one example there, but, you know, we just want to set aside an area where residents can park and utilize what the town has to offer. I, I think, you know, just doing a one-time sticker...
So we found that there was a policy that actually said that it was changed every year, and we didn't know that, so we weren't changing it. The other thing is the boat launch key does get changed every year, so...
I think you have people who...
It doesn't matter, I don't, it doesn't matter to me which way we do it, but we should all decide on something and then do it.
I can see that the boat land, the boat launch has a parking sticker, the boat area down there, but I think when you get into all these trailheads with like Selt and everything else, I think there's a vast amount of people that come to the town of Kingston to walk these trails that aren't from town.
Right.
So if they don't know about the stickers, I think you're just gonna, it's gonna be a major issue with this, the parking. I understand you're trying to get places for the town residents to park, but these places that have been manufactured, or not mistaken, by Selt, they put these kiosks up and they, they make the areas, now we're gonna go and enforce a parking ticket, or a sticker, I'm sorry. I think we're gonna run into an issue that there's so many people from different towns coming in to use these trails. I think for chief of police, I think it'd be absolute nightmare to try to enforce that on all these trailheads. I understand the town properties, but I don't know how far we want to go into these cell properties, I think you'd have a major issue.
Yeah, and I don't think we could in that, but I, I think on the town one, if there's one or two spots that are reserved for town residents...
Would you do that by a placard, like a post?
Yeah, just, I mean, I think we still have five other signs that park in town resident only, you know, and just have that, but...
I, I don't think we're looking for an enforcement issue, I don't see it as that. I just assume give a one-time sticker fee, get the sticker, call it a day. The boat keys are different, I think you have to change them every year to make, for safety reasons or compliance with the milfoil and stuff like that. I mean, you gotta do all that stuff that goes for the boats and the water. So I would go stickers, buy one and have it forever, or if you have the car, if you have to replace it because you get a new car or something, that's different. They're not that expensive. But the boat keys should be changed annually, I, I, that's my opinion on that.
So do we increase the cost, if it's a one-time sticker? Because they, they're not free, you do have to purchase them, right? Do we increase the cost of that one-time sticker?
Sorry, I had not ordered them before, but I did look into ordering them, and they're, they're, they're fairly cheap, so, yeah.
So we could leave it at $2?
Yeah.
And then one time, so we take out the renewable?
Yep.
And then for additional suggested areas, do the car top boat lock, state shed boat spots, and spaces at the rec center, and leave off the trailhead Selt stuff.
That makes sense.
Yeah, but isn't there a sign at the rec center? On the gate, there's a sign that says, town resident parking or something.
Yes, there is.
So where else would you want to put it?
I know on the weekends down there, it can get mobbed.
Right.
I think it's just, let's say you want to go to the draft house, or you want to just go to the town beach. It quantifies that. If, say Paul's having an event, you can't get there and, and there's tons of other, you know, or tons of cars down there not tied to the event, it gives the police at least a place to start to, start getting people out of there.
So another thing, I'm sorry, another thing you may want to look into, and again, just to probably require a sign and some enforcement from the chief, is I'm seeing stuff now on social media, that people are now getting the inkling to use the rec center beach to park there and walk up to the draft house. And that might be a liability and assault that's town property, if that is owned by the town, to have people come up and dock in there without a dock and maybe a safety issue. I mean, we're basically supplying a beach landing for a restaurant, and I think that's gonna become more popular, because people are talking about that online.
Yeah.
And then I, I just think maybe a sign down there, that might just, I hate to say it, like just cover the town liability. If it says, you can't come here, and you do, and you go, God forbid you get hurt, clearly states are not allowed to do that.
And that was one of the things that, I mean, I think it was, what, two or three years ago, we stopped keying those, because there was a debate as to whether we wanted to allow access to the beach and someone didn't get the key. It's however you guys want to do it, I, I just...
I'm talking about the swimming beach.
Yeah, I mean, that, that was actually keyed before, it was the same one as the boat launch key.
Oh, wait, I'm, I'm talking about people enjoying the lake, coming in docking on that beach to go to the restaurant.
Okay.
So maybe a sign that would say down there that you can't do this, and if, God forbid, something happens, that might, it's probably not 100% to protect us, but I think it's something that you're not allowed to do, and it states that with a sign.
I agree, because that beach isn't that big, and the last thing, you don't want boats, canoes, any kayaks, nothing in there that's disrupting the folks who are trying to use it for swimming, too, and put us on there. I agree.
It's the idea.
Okay, further discussion. Okay, are we all set then?
So do we want to adopt this? Are we ready to adopt?
As amended, yeah.
Um, one, so, sorry, under section six, the $50 fine for vehicles without a resident parking sticker displayed that matches their license plate. So that implies that I take one from my wife, put it on my vehicle, and I'm misrepresenting it? But what if somebody parks there and they just don't have one? Is it still $50? Because it doesn't specify that. So I would just specify either no, like, no parking sticker, or one that doesn't match a license plate.
Yeah, they really can't come off and on, so...
But before, like, if, if I bought it for my vehicle...
For two bucks?
I didn't even put it on and gave it to my wife. It's to my license plate, you know what I mean? I guess.
That's the way it's meant to be, so someone that, it doesn't match the license plate, it could be anybody, so...
We would run the plate and make sure it's Kingston, is it?
Right, so if...
So if it's Kingston resident, there's not gonna be a fine?
Not for Kingston.
No.
Even if they don't pay a sticker?
Even if they don't buy a...
We could give a, put a warning on there, on their...
So if it's, if it's a Haverhill, Mass resident, or Keene, New Hampshire, well, I don't want to pick on Massachusetts, but, uh, would they also be assessed a $50 fine if they're parked there?
They would get a $50 fine.
That's just not the way it's displayed here.
No, yeah, no, I'm reading it now, so this is actually saying we would fine our own residents.
But that's not the, but that's not the purpose, no.
Right, so, okay.
So do we want to hold off and get it revised back to us?
Well, we can say vehicles without a resident parking sticker will be subject to a $50 fine.
Okay, that makes it up to...
If you're a Kingston resident driving somebody else's car, you're getting it in.
Sure, 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 because it's about the vehicle.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so we'll just take, got it.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to approve it as amended.
I'll move.
In a second?
Second.
Thank you. Just further discussion. All listen, favor please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Ayes have it. Motion carries as amended. Next one is the disposition of non-public meetings. No, wait a minute.
Assessing and building out.
Assessing and building out, excuse me. Let's take care of that, this came up as a dis... Anyways, who wants to address that? It's come to our attention that it's not easy to have our assessing person be able to take her legitimate vacation hours. And when we looked at some of the other towns, it seems that Placso actually closes the office for the week that the assessing person is on vacation, and gives, leaves a notice both on, on the outside of the window, on the Facebook, on town website, that their office will be closed, and that we don't have the additional personnel to staff it, that they could send in, they can leave comments or questions on the phone, or e, by email, and someone will get back to them as soon as possible.
And this goes beyond just vacation to address that she, there's two departments there, and she wants to do a limited or dedicated hours approach, or by, by appointment only, other towns do that. She would like to have the building department be Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, and then that department would not be open to the public on Wednesday and Friday, that would be set aside for assessing.
I, I think you need to have this in writing to us, Susan.
Yeah, it's, it's in her memo here, just for discussion at this point.
It's filed right on the memo, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what that's got in there. That would also allow her to take a vacation day on a Wednesday or Friday without needing so much backup. Just, it gives her a little more flexibility, but mainly to be able to complete her work. It's, it's the constant disruption with the people coming to the window, makes it very difficult to do some of the really detail-oriented work in the assessing department, or either department. There's a lot of paperwork that's follow-up, and spreadsheets and everything else that she needs to do, that she doesn't have time to complete. So this would kind of separate the two departments. So that's the, the proposal here, that's in front of you. We can bring it back to the next meeting if you want to consider all the details that are in there.
I'd say put it on the next agenda.
Yeah.
Yep.
Didn't we have some conversation about help in that office before, to part-time help?
Well, we had a warrant article this past year for a part-time building inspector, a clerk, and that did not pass. We will again be putting it on the warrant article until we get it passed. Same with a land use person who needs to go full-time.
But it doesn't, it doesn't prohibit us from, if we had funds available, to do a temporary...
That's correct.
Correct, we got a lot of stuff going on, and I would just hate to, I would hate to delay a process, or to, if a town resident needed something that we're not available to help them.
That's correct. We can bring in temporarys help.
Just, and like you said, we'll talk, we could talk about it at a later time, but this, I think we have different avenues.
We need to talk about it, because we need to look at the whole department as a whole.
Correct.
Not just one individual in there.
I would also like to reiterate that I have a member of my staff that has gone over to help and is willing to do that. Of course, during tax time or election week, that won't be possible, but for the most part, we could probably help out.
So about two-thirds of the time, that's still, that help is available.
Not every day, but, you know...
No, no, I understand, it would have to be pre-planned and set up accordingly.
Yeah, and we, we just feel that we need something more consistent, and to know that it's there, you know, and, and a set schedule is what we were after, so, see how that works out. Okay.
Peter, did you want to add something?
Well, actually, yes, and, and to the benefit, and I know you got lovely people from across the hall, that, that come and help us every time that that bell hits a knock-out. I, I believe, yeah, we, the, the help is there, but definitely we need somebody to, to be of support, because the, the workload is taxing, especially on, on Tori for, for what she does. So I believe that there is a need in that area that has to be filled.
I, I'd like to comment that I think ensuring that the public understands the workload is really important in furthering getting a warrant article passed, because if we keep, you know, if, if they're always...
Available.
Available, then, then why do we need somebody?
Right.
Not to say that we need to make the public hurt, that's not what I'm saying, but the reality is that there's one person, so if, if Tori's requesting a division of duties clearly defined, that helps her possibly be more efficient, and then it also lets the public know that...
Correct.
There's finite resources, right?
Correct, there's finite resources and a lot of work to be done.
Yes.
And we need some help.
Fairness to Tori, if she needs something now, because this, all the town stuff, it takes time to finalize and do it. If she needs something, then find out what she needs and we'll cover it or we'll close it. If she needs two days off, she has the right to have two days off, and we'll just close the assessing window and do it.
Let's, let's have a little more specific, yeah, I, I agree. She, she needs to take her vacations appropriately, so, absolutely. And so we need to help facilitate that happening. And I totally agree with you, Chuck.
So we'll discuss this proposition next meeting?
Next meeting.
Okay.
Yep, and get that rolling. Okay. You want to go through non-public meetings minutes, too, and then we can let our department heads head out? Public, oh, yeah, yeah. Do we have any public comment, just for, just in case?
No, do you have kids next?
No, Rick's gone and...
Rick's gone.
It's too bad, he might...
Nice day, Alex.
I don't blame, well, not that night, but it's, it's...
Gotta get a walk-in before, right?
There you go, all right. Comments? Are you happy with it as is? Do you want to make any change, proposed changes? Have we talked about file cabinets with locks? Are we gonna go in that direction?
They should be kept here.
In the town hall?
The public, yeah, they should be kept here.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that.
For hard copy, that's right, yes, agreed.
Is there a length of time on those to be kept? Is there a length of time that we have to hold on to those minutes?
Minutes need to be kept permanently.
Permanently?
Perman, permanent.
Perpetuity.
Perpetuity.
In perpetuity, forever.
Ever, if ever.
Mrs. Dyer, when you come forward, I know you want to comment on this issue.
Did they ever, just while she's, did they ever change the, the law in the state about keeping paper copies as opposed to electronic for minutes?
They can be electronic as long as they meet that requirement.
Oh, PDSA, okay, right, okay.
But that was, so, a couple of questions, I just, because of the confusion surrounding non-public, I was wondering if we could actually have a better definition of what includes public versus non-public, we, because it references the RSA, but it doesn't give, it doesn't give a definition, but at least the version that I saw, like, it says RSA 91, yeah.
Right, and that's what we go by? I don't know that we can define it any further for ourselves, but...
Okay, I didn't know if we could expand on that to help when we're...
We have to go by the RSA definition, so I don't know that we should expand on, on the legal definition.
Yeah, but I was just, examples of what counts or what doesn't count. Is there a template that everyone can use?
Yes, for the non-public.
Okay, and is that attached to this policy? And is that approved?
It can be, it's, it's from the state, and I, that's what I use it.
Yeah, because that would be very helpful, to be able to use that template attached to the policy so that we could all be using the same template. And that, because I know we listed the requirements, but I think a template would be very helpful. And then I was wondering if we could keep these electronically. So my concern with keeping my town clerk's office for Budget Committee would be if I was in a Budget Committee meeting and the town clerk was not in her office, I would not have access to them. So if we were trying to review them or go back to something that was in non-public, we would not have access during our meetings.
You can have them electronically. It stipulates password-protected.
Yep.
So... Electronically, yeah.
Correct. So we could keep them electronically, is that, is the, well, is the policy saying we can have them electronically or it's paper?
Yeah, we added a section.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't see that, I didn't see that updated version.
Paper copies, yeah. Minutes aren't the property of any one particular person, they're the property of the town.
Correct. Yep, I agree.
So they need to be accessible by the town. So I would think electronic, in the case of budget, would be kept by the town clerk.
Okay, so this is my concern with that. If I, if, if I have non-public minutes...
She's talking non-public, you're talking public.
I'm talking both.
If I have non-public minutes, they need to be locked and sealed. No one should have access.
Or they can be electronic and password-protected.
Correct. However, there, no one can have access to accept the committee.
But the town clerk can store them and just not have the password. If they're stored by the...
So how do, can you just walk me through that? I'm, I'm, I look at, I have a file electronically, I have to send it to the town clerk, then she has access to that file.
Not if it's password-protected, she can't open it. That's what the password is for.
On the file or, so then how do I, so then if I want to review them, I'm just, I'm just trying to, if I'm in Budget Committee meeting and I need to review a non-public meeting?
Yeah.
How do I get access to that file?
Then you arrange prior to the meeting for the minutes. We can't, I mean, we can't make the exception for that for every person.
But it's not...
Susan keeps the non-public meeting for the select board.
I do.
We worked that out a long time ago.
Right.
I'm good with it, that's fine.
And I believe as chair of the Budget Committee, you would have access to your non-public minutes. You can keep them in a password-protected file that only you can open. And if the town clerk is the one that we say should keep them, then you can give her a paper copy in a sealed envelope the way we used to.
Right.
She can keep it with your other minutes.
Right. Okay, so I agree with you, but, but I'm going to go back to Lori's point of where do I put that file? So in my mind, if I put that file on my, if I password-protect a file or I put it into a network, it should be a town network. I don't want it, I don't want that file. I want to be able to not have access to that because if I'm no longer on budget, I should not have it.
Right.
So that folder, whatever in the cloud, should be password-protected, Budget Committee, Budget Committee, anyone in Budget Committee should have access to that file. And once, if people change every year, the password should be protected and they no longer have access to that file. Is that...
It could be in a shared drive. It would have to be because it could be on your own personal app.
Yeah, I don't, I wouldn't want it, but I'm just asking if that is how we should be doing that.
The problem with the shared drive is committees don't have access to our server. So if they were in the middle of a meeting and they, something came up and they're like, we need to reference some meeting minutes, you know, they don't have access to that. Committees and boards don't have access to our server. So I could either talk to Block Five and get a shared committee thing, but there's no way of them getting access to our server.
So why don't you have a file cabinet in the new cleaned-out area that will have a key that has her hard copy?
Yeah. Okay. But again, it comes the problem that if it's electronic, where does it get stored?
Yeah, that was my question.
That they still have access for.
Because my question was more, can they be kept electronically and would we have access to that?
How about on a thumb drive that gets stored in that same file cabinet?
Fine.
I was about to suggest the same. Not only a thumb drive, you can get a 2TB hard drive, external hard drive that is password-protected, that can only be used by a management person.
I'm a spare.
Yes, spare, he's going to spare.
No. Just an external hard drive that can be, when, at the time of meeting?
Yep.
It can be locked within a physical...
Which is fine.
And then stored.
I was just trying to understand the...
The thumb drive may be the answer.
Yeah, which is fine.
Okay, that's, can we move on?
Which gets locked in that file cabinet?
Yeah.
And it would be locked.
Exactly.
There you go. Come on, boys. Let's go.
We're going to need to adjust that.
My other question is, so this policy is being put in place, but now I'm, so how do I know when it's effective and how do I get access to it outside of this meeting?
Get access to what?
The policy, too. Because I need, I am going to need to update my bylaws because of this policy, so now because of this policy, I have operational requirements with minutes, so...
So, you know, we'll probably take a motion on it and then, so it'll be effective today.
Okay.
And then Susan emails out the policies to the department heads, the committee chairs, so then you have access to it.
Okay, so it's the email that we get access to, it's not any place where I can...
It's not posted on the new website, everything will be, all the policies will be out there, but they're not on the current website.
Okay.
Okay, but we need to move on.
So we have a couple of amendments. We have at least that one amendment and then...
Mrs. Merrill, you have something to add to this particular discussion on the minutes? Come on forward.
So my only thought was, when I read through the policy, was I'm not sure that it's giving us clear direction upon when the minutes must be made public, must be released.
Which minutes?
Non-public, only non-public. That's the only thing I'm concerned about, was the non-public policy. I just wasn't sure I had clear enough guidance on at what point...
Never.
Never?
Never. So it is never? Okay.
No, they, they need to be reviewed periodically and released if the reason for sealing them no longer exists. And then they'll go with the regular minutes. That's what we're doing with all of them.
Right. If, after, I think it's 10 years, they should be reviewed. We're in the process of doing that now on the select board meetings. If, when we review it, the material is sensitive, it remains non-public.
For another 10 years.
For another 10 years.
Okay. Okay.
Otherwise, it's made public.
Right.
And so it's up to the complete discretion of the committee that's reviewing them.
The board.
The board, the board or committee that's responsible for it.
Okay, as to whether or not, okay. I just wasn't sure about that when I read it and wanted to make sure we had very clear guidance on what criteria was involved in determining that they were no longer sensitive.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Right, any other comments, suggestions?
So, Susan, you were saying, what amendments did we make today that are reflected on here?
It was about the thumb drive. We want to put the language in there that they can be stored on a thumb drive in a locked cabinet.
Yep.
So we need to get the wording for that.
So why don't we put that on the agenda for an action item for the next meeting?
We'll bring it back, the amended draft.
Yep. Anything else? So the next item on the business, on our, is a town organizational chart. It's the, department heads may leave if they want to or stick around, it's up to you guys. No, no, no one's kicking you out. You can stay as long as you would like. But the next item is the town organizational chart, a review of that.
So I guess I'll take it. So Susan and I worked on this, and I know it's really busy, but that's just how our town is organized and how the boards interrelate. Stacy had a comment about the Budget Committee, so there's two sides. One is the Budget Committee is just kind of stuck up there and the other side calls out the Budget Committee separately. But other than that, you know, this is, this wasn't intended to document every employee in town. Departments can create their own org charts and figure that out. This was really just to look at the structure, who reports to who, and, and how everybody interrelates and interacts.
So, on the one that's labeled number two, side two, the Budget Committee is labeled down the bottom with a dotted line up to the Select Board? Okay. And then on side one, it is located where?
Stacked up.
Oh, there it is, got it.
Yeah, the Select Board and then to Finance. But Stacy preferred that it be called out since they work with every department and committee.
So your recommendation, Stacy, was for the side two, which brings it down to the bottom.
Well, her recommendation was just that they worked with everybody, so I just pulled it out and put it in the block.
Right. I mean, so if you, if you actually think about budget cycle, it's the Select Board budget actually goes to Budget Committee, so it really kind of flows that way. And, but then we work, we work with all, every...
Yeah, but the lines aren't directional?
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, no, I know that.
So here's my suggestion. Move me over here.
Okay.
Move Budget Committee here. They're an elected position, they're not under the select.
Yeah. And we also have to review the assessing department.
I don't want to get into it right now. It's not appropriate, but it needs, I'm not happy with this arrangement.
So we can, we can approve this for now, that's okay, but it's subject to change. It's based on some information that's been developed through the Matrix Committee and you don't, and you don't know all that stuff yet, but that's going to be subject to change.
Right, but this is how it is right now.
That's how it is currently, that is correct. That is correct.
One or two.
Two. They're both correct. They're the same, one. We're going to go with one.
Go with one. With that one change from town clerk and adding the Budget Committee.
Yep.
Because they are elected.
Yep.
Okay.
Budget Committee is elected, but it's also the Budget Committee's budget that goes on the warrant.
Correct. And there are statutory issues that...
Right, so they should be up...
They should be right on top.
And this is not showing supervisory for the town clerk or the Budget Committee, it's just a working relationship.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
I'll make a motion that we accept the...
Proposed.
Proposed organizational chart for the town labeled side one of two with the modification that Town Clerk and their staff be moved over to the left-hand side of the sheet, still under the, still with a line to the Select Board, and that Budget Committee take the place of the Town Clerk box on the right-hand side with the line to the Select Board. Is that right?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Proposed? Ayes have it. Okay. 47 Newton Junction Road, that would be in non-public if we're to discuss that, am I correct? Do we need to discuss that?
I have the correspondence where we were getting guidance from the attorney and back and forth, so some of that is non-public, but basically we're working on making sure everyone is...
Notified accordingly?
Notified correctly and then figuring out how to get deeds.
So do you need any action from the board at this time?
Nope, I just want to say, you can read the information from the attorney, but I've done, I'm not a genealogist, I've done what I can, I've called numerous people, I've, I've reached out to them on social media to try to find out who are the heirs of these people, and it's very complicated. I've done the best I can, but I'm sure I don't want to spend any more time on it, nor I don't think I, it's not my...
Looking at that letter from the attorney?
Yep.
I would recommend that the attorney deals with that because if the board makes a decision, everybody we're talking about in that letter doesn't even have a will.
Right.
Now, we, we are dictating where that financial obligation is going.
Yeah.
And I don't think we should be doing that. There's no wills.
I agree.
I mean, how far do you go? And all of a sudden, we miss somebody, somebody, somebody. Now we're on a legal standpoint because we just gave somebody else's money away.
Right.
I mean, that's, reading that attorney's letter, there's just, it's like a trickle effect. And there's no, I mean, there's, somebody passed, hand it to their heirs, done.
Yep.
And if the one of the heirs passed, they get it all and they can divide it up. It shouldn't be, I don't think it should be a town issue. It's, I think that's definitely an attorney.
Okay.
I think she does raise the question whether the initial letter should come from the town or the attorney. She was suggesting maybe the town, but if you prefer, that's the question that I did highlight just to make sure.
I just sent the attorney do it.
I would agree. I'm 100% in agreement with that. So direct that directly to the attorney for conclusion, hopefully. Okay, ready for new business? Do you want to take a health break?
Yes.
Okay, I can hear some sighs over here. All right, five, 10-minute health break.
Start at 10:00.
Yep.
Adam, did you get that? Okay. Make sure they need to be addressed.
Make sure they need to be addressed.
Okay, we're reconvening and back on the agenda. Let's see. Under new business, am I correct, boys and girls?
Yes.
The contract with the Water Text for the Poet Project, did we review and sign it? It's at the attorney's though, right?
It's still with the attorney, I didn't get it from Verdantes until Friday morning. So, she thought she could turn it around today, but, you know, meeting being first thing in the morning, we don't have it, so.
Okay. Next meeting.
Next, well, we have to send it off to Water Text for them to sign first. Is there a way to authorize you to sign it contingent upon approval from the attorney or something? So that we could get it moving and then I can have you in to sign?
Yes, we don't want to wait two more weeks.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that.
So, just so we're all clear, Susan, let's outline what steps need to take place so we're all clear on it and that everyone is. So, we have, you're gonna have to help me, Susan, because I'm asking you for... The contract now is where?
It's with our attorney.
Our attorney?
It was drawn up by Verdantes as part of their contract to say you would handle that work, but I didn't get it till Friday. And our, our policy with contracts is to have it reviewed by our attorney.
Yes.
So, she's taking a look, she'll get it back to us. And then the next step is that the Water Text, as the contractor, needs to see it and sign it. Then it comes back to us through our board signature.
Okay. At what point, if any, does it need to go back to DES?
When it's all signed.
Once it's all signed, it's fully executed?
Yes, I don't think they need to review it, I'll double check that.
I think we should, I think we need to check that, because I would hate to go through this whole execution process if, if they need to see something before we do that.
Okay, because a lot of it was part of the bidding process, the whole document. But I, I'll send what I have to them too and let them know where it stands. That's what I'll, I'll do that when I get downstairs.
Okay.
That our attorney is reviewing it.
Okay.
All right, so we're not gonna take any action on it until we know where they have to go to DES or not?
Right, and you are our authorized signer, so I don't know if this needs to be a vote or if I just, once it's gone through all the steps, I could have you come in and sign it.
I mean, we've, we've, we've provided all the authorization and everything up to this point, so... I mean, I, I mean, I'm comfortable with us handling this as we need to.
For signatures.
For signatures.
Yeah.
And, and I'll make that motion that, that, you know, we're getting the appropriate reviews of the contracts by all the parties involved. We'll gain all the signatures, this will all be run through, Susan will, will spearhead this.
Through council?
And through council, at, at the points that it needs to. And then assuming that we have a contract that's fully ready to sign and all approved by all parties, that our chair will, will be authorized to sign it and will be underway. So, that's my motion.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Do you want an abstention? No?
No.
Okay. I assumed it was an aye. Okay. Now, we have the access agreement for the poet, for the homeowners.
Yeah, and I've got two different ones in there now. I had one from Massachusetts that Verdantes sent to me, and I tried to play with that, and that's one copy I put in your packets. And then, when I reached out to the attorney about the contract, she sent me the one on top, which I think is a lot better. I haven't had time to try to go through it yet.
I, I went through it here, I didn't, I didn't do it ahead of time. But I had gone through the one that, that you provided from, that Verdantes provided to us. And there were some, there were some, some issues that I had with that. But then reading the one from our attorney, I think it covers pretty much all the stuff that was in the, in the sample that Verdantes sent us. And it's, it's, it's much more of a legal agreement.
Okay.
And I think, I think it's...
So, we should adopt the, the one drafted by our attorney?
Well, that would be my, that would be my suggestion, but I have a question.
Okay.
And this is on page two, item H, where it talks about removing the point-of-entry system from the landowner's property as soon as practicable following, anyway, so... Because what's gonna happen is that eventually the PFAS contaminant might very well drop below the, the threshold levels.
Yeah.
And at that point, or some period of time after that point, the town would no longer be responsible for the systems or maintaining them and so forth and so on. This agreement has only the option that the town has the responsibility to then go back in and remove that system from the homeowner. And if that's what the homeowner wants, that's, that, that, I guess that's our... Because it, it, the agreement here clearly states that, that that system is town property. And so, it's saying that we're responsible for taking it out when it's no longer needed. I guess my, my preference would be, if it's, if, if it's okay to do it that way, is that if, if a homeowner wants to keep it, that, that they should be able to, and, and...
At their cost.
At their cost, of course.
To maintain it from that point forward.
Right, from that point forward, and that, because it's a treatment system that they might wanna keep, and I don't see any reason that we would be taking it out if they want it.
I would agree with that.
I think that was in our discussion, that basically we would not be responsible for the maintenance anymore, but not that we would remove it, unless they asked us to.
Right.
Right, so, but I don't, I don't see anything in here that talks about the option for the homeowner to keep it and take responsibility for it.
So, it should come under H, an expansion of item H on page two?
And there are, there are at least, there is at least one other place that does refer to the removal. And so, I think that the attorney should probably take, if we're gonna ask for that modification... That they look at the agreement and perhaps make that adjustment.
So, Glenn?
F says leave in place and maintain until such time as...
Yeah, there's a bunch of places here, remove all POE system equipment under C.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there's a bunch of places.
The system is legally designated to an alternate party, that would be the landowner.
Right.
Which one are you?
Or a different company.
F. Or a different company, right.
Leave in place and maintain POE, POE system until such time as A, landowner's water supply meets applicable standards, okay? Or B, the installation of an alternative water supply, which would mean like if there was, you know, if town water went in or something.
Right.
Or C, responsibility to maintain, the POE system is legally designated to an alternate party responsible to maintain. Well, okay, well, I suppose that could be possibly...
From the town to the landowner.
Yeah, or, or maybe the town would contract with a third party to do it, you know?
Yeah.
Take responsibility.
A lot of legal ease in this thing.
There is.
I wanna just make it more clear that...
I think it needs to be clearer, clearer, somehow.
That if they want to choose it, they could keep it at their own expense, the homeowner. Once the, once the PFAS have been mitigated, they'll have the opportunity to maintain the system at their own expense. Basically is what we're saying.
So, if, if the homeowner chooses not to sign this, then the town has no recourse in their water. Do we then keep paying for water if they're getting it delivered?
I'd say no. That's, that's a good question to ask.
I think that's an attorney question.
I think there's a couple of houses who refused entry for testing, if I remember the, reading the report correctly. They could not, they could not test the water on some of these designated houses. So, if they choose not to allow the system to be, right? We, we need to figure that out, because we shouldn't have to keep paying when we have a solution.
Right.
Right, exactly.
But if, if there were residences that refused the testing of their water, we would not have them listed as a contaminated site?
They were initially, and they refused subsequent testing, because they test the water quite frequently.
They, they were tested initially?
Yeah, 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 and then they refused entry later.
Okay.
So, Glenn, what is your perception of how this is going to get signed? We, you meaning the town, gonna have twenty, whatever, twenty-five contracts done up and mailed out, and expecting them to return them to the town hall, thus then we give them to the company to have, to make the appointment to go in? I mean, what do you think the process is?
Well, the...
Or go door-to-door, or what?
Call them up and invite them in?
Yeah.
Like a meeting with all of them?
Well, I don't know if I wanna meet with everybody, to be honest with you. But they could come in and sign the form and give it to Susan.
They could be notified or called, and said, "The form is here, as soon as you get it signed." Maybe that's the order that they get done.
If you want us to email it, or mail it to you, we can do that, but you gotta bring in the hard copy signed.
Because the company can't go and do them until they, they know.
That's correct.
They don't have to see it, they know once the contract's been signed, then they can do up there, five a day or whatever they're gonna do. And call, and they, they then would have to make, have the responsibility of contacting the people. We don't wanna be involved with having to call them at set times and get...
No, no, no.
No, no.
No, but by the same token, if Susan emails them, the form to them, or for each individual, they have to bring that form and sign, a notarized sign here.
I, I think we might, we might want to think about, I realize it's a...
Notarizing it?
Well, I'm thinking that, that it should go certified mail to the twenty or twenty-one...
Five or six.
Homeowners, however many.
Yep.
We have all that information with a, with a cover letter that explains what we're doing here, and that in order for them to, to get one of these systems, they need to sign this, and it gets notarized and get back to us, and we need to have a certain date.
Get one of these systems and/or be provided water.
Well, no, because we're now saying, at least I, my view...
We're saying that this is...
We're saying this is our solution.
Right, right, okay.
And so, for the houses that have the systems already, they're getting this agreement as well? To sign, I mean, even though they already have a system?
They put in or we put in?
That the town currently pays for. I think Water Text has all of them, Paula, right? So, Water Text has all of them, they, they maintain those six houses.
Yeah.
So, do those homeowners sign this? Because there's information in here that the homeowners probably don't.
It's not pertinent to them, right?
I don't know, I, I, I think it is, because if we're saying, at some point, if the water is good, you know, there's, there's clauses, we were just talking about this.
But I think that's a different contract.
Who owned, who owned the systems when we put them, or the town put them in?
I think it depends on the house, the house that I live in, the homeowner put it in, but Water Text maintains it now, so the...
They paid to have it put in.
The homeowner did.
Previous homeowner, the homeowner did.
Yeah, some of them, the, the homeowners paid to have them put in, but the town is paying to maintain them.
Because I guess, I think I recall...
As part of this whole process.
Some discussion about the town having to pay them whatever they cost.
We're not bringing...
No, no.
I'm saying there was a discussion about that at some point.
There were, yeah, right.
Not reimbursing.
So, so those six houses, is there something that they should sign? Because we're, we're entering into a new agreement, right?
I, I would say so.
I think they do.
But not this exact same contract.
But they do need to at least know the part about, it may be a certain time where the town will no longer maintain.
Exactly.
We need to get this done, so we can get going with it, and they'll separate those six, and maybe...
Yeah, okay.
One page of this is relevant to that.
Probably a subset of this will apply to those six.
After the fact, not to confuse it with this.
So, we...
So, Susan, we'll have the attorney take a, another look at this?
Yep.
With regard to, you know, what happens if, if the homeowner wants to keep the system in the end?
Yeah, I've got that, and then I'll, I'll ask about the existing systems too.
Right, and if they can provide perhaps a, a version of this that would be applicable to the existing systems.
You're good?
Well, it will be good to get this underway and done. You know, one, I just wanted to mention that if I read, if I read the, the proposal correctly from the Water Text, once they have the contract and they're all set to go, they have a pretty, they have a pretty short time window that they proposed to us. I believe they said they'd have the systems installed within thirty to forty-five days. Which means, which means they must feel that they have access to all of the parts that they need.
Yeah.
So, hopefully this will not drag on for very long, which is a good thing. Because I was anticipating that, you know, depending on the company we chose and depending on parts availability, it could be, could be many months down the road, and it, from the proposal that we got, from the vendor that we have chosen, it appears that it's gonna be a shorter timeframe, so that's good.
Public comment number two, would you like to address the board, Mrs. Merrill?
Sorry that I had to leave abruptly before, I, I'm juggling a lot of things this morning. But I was not here for the org chart, and I just had a couple of questions. And whether you wanna do it later or now, I don't, doesn't really matter.
Org, org chart represents what is?
Exactly, but I have a couple of questions.
What will be?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
I mean, I, I understand you've approved it, and that's fine.
Yep.
I just have a couple of questions.
Yep.
Pertaining to the planning board. I understand that the select board hires and fires the land use administrator, signs the final contract with the town planner, and a direct supervision of that. And I understand now that the planning board and the zoning board report to the two of them, rather than them reporting to us, according to this chart. But in the past, I know the town has handled the employees and the contracts, but the planning board has sort of supervised the work product that has been coming out. And according to the way this is done, I just wasn't sure how that would work. I never wanna step on toes, so I wanna make certain that I understand exactly who reports to who, and the difference if we supervise work product anymore, if that's supervised by the selectmen. It's always been collaborative in the past, really not, and I understand the need for an org chart, and I understand the need for this, but I just wanna be very clear as to who he puts to who, and that, so that we operate in the proper manner. And I guess we're the only organization over there that kinda has this kind of a situation.
The planning board is also regulated by statute, so there's a lot of things that happen independent of the select board.
Correct.
And I don't see the select board overseeing the normal day-to-day output. However, there is, there, it's, it's like the building inspector. It's still, I think, a direct report ultimately to this, to the select board, regardless. So, if, if you're, if the, if the planning board is responsible for the workflow, that's fine. I don't see any conflict in that, but I think ultimately that individual reports to the select board.
And I would agree with you, that, that it's important that the employees absolutely report to the selectmen.
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely, I have no quarrel with any of that.
Okay.
In fact, I have none, absolutely none. And nor do I have any quarrel with the planner. You know, we recommend the contract to the select board, the select board determines whether or not that contract is going to be signed. No quarrel with that at all, in fact, no quarrel with anything. Just trying to get an understanding of, do we just sort of proceed as we have in the past?
Pretty much.
Or, just because of the, the dotted lines, the, you know, kind of thing?
It's as, yeah, I'm just trying to move things along here, Lynn.
Okay.
Okay, because we've already been here three hours.
I know.
Okay.
Fortunately, I haven't. So, if you can, if there's anything to clarify, if you just would, that would be fine, if we just operate as we have been, that's fine, regardless of what this looks like.
Basically, what's gonna happen, as has been, and it may change as, when it goes full-time, but I don't, I doubt it.
It doesn't matter, you know, just as long as it's clear. I just wanna make sure that we're clear, and I'm not stepping on anybody's toes, or anybody in my position is stepping on toes. Okay, thank you.
Yes. You have a microphone, right?
Sorry. The question about the budget committee schedule, we had reached out to, well, we had suggested talking to the moderator to make sure. And she's sent a message to us saying she would like to meet with the board of selectmen and the Budcom chair at a meeting to discuss these issues, so we give both the same information. She's available until Thursday this week in the evenings, available Thursday during the day. So, maybe even just a select board rep and, and Stacy, just to clarify the date question? I just wanna bring it up while you're all here.
Sure.
Thursday during the day, if she can do it?
Okay, thank you, Chuck.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm fine with, with our, with our rep to that board, to that committee.
Right, because we're not gonna be all getting next week, next few days.
We probably would not be able to reconvene the whole group, so... Chuck, you okay with that?
Yes.
On Thursday, I'm not available until afternoon.
Afternoon, I'll check with Ellen, and I'll get in touch with you.
Okay, thank you.
And you're good all day?
What time?
Okay.
All right, now, well, we, veterans' credit application is in the armory's home over here. Intent to cut timber cuts in here as well, and a deed for semin, the seminary. And also your point, cemetery, excuse me. And Mark Goddard's being appointed to the budget committee, which is an awesome thing. So, those are being, that's what's, and there's also a human resource voucher to be signed as well.
We have to accept those donations, I think, right?
And we have to, yeah. Unanticipated funds, we have down-to-earth landscaping, three hundred dollars, and seacoast ukulele players, seven hundred ninety-five dollars. Well, that's very nice.
I know, we accept the donations to the recreation department, from down-to-earth landscaping for three hundred and seacoast ukulele players for seven ninety-five.
Second.
Further discussion? Many thanks to both organizations. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. And a motion to appoint Mark Goddard to the Budcom?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
And discussion? Yep?
The known territory requires that any appointment to budget committee comes from the moderator and not from the select board.
Well, yes, we don't have to sign that form. We've been signing them all along, you know what?
Yeah, there were two previous ones, right?
I'm not gonna ask for, I'll ask for forgiveness, but we're gonna go ahead and do it right now.
Okay.
Okay? All right, because going for next year, we'll worry about that, how's that sound?
I'm just...
I mean, you know, we've been doing it right along. So, I, I have no problem at all appointing him, and if, if you didn't want him, I'm sure you'd say something.
I'm the one who asked for the appointment, and he did get unanimous vote. Yeah, that's usually the process, we get a recommendation from the chair, and make sure the person is willing to do it, and then the four votes.
Okay, thank you.
We can clarify it for next year if we need to?
Or care to.
Whatever.
You know me, I love paperwork. Okay, we get it, we have a non-public at this point, I think we'd like to take... I know we still have to review job descriptions, I'd like to do that, and I like to get the non-public out of the way, and then reconvene in public session and take care of the job descriptions.
Well, if we're gonna be consistent with the wage matrix and doing job descriptions in non-public, then we have to do them in non-public.
All right, then, then let's do it in non-public, and let's go. We could go next. All right, I, I need a motion to go into non-public for two things. We need to have an update on contracted services with the department heads contract, and review of employee evaluations at some point, a department head evaluation, and job description.
And I guess Adam has to talk, wants to speak to us?
Who does?
Adam?
Adam.
Adam had a brief...
Oh, yes.
Wanted to talk with you, they might wanna take care of him first.
Okay, motion for non-public.
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Roll call, Laurie?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
And I.